Call us at the door of the Blackhawk County Board Supervisors for November 1st, 2022. Roll call, Mr. Beeter.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Jelka.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions the other day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Opposed, motion carried. Public comments? Anyone from the public like to make any comments before we get started? Warren James?
Hello?
Name and address, please, sir.
James B. Robeson, 1555 Newell Street. I'm back again to the...I haven't heard anything about my previous visit about the Sheriff's Department not fully investigating my allegation of fraud against a city code enforcement officer and the implications, you know, in terms of you guys, the law says you have to give every citizen equal access to the law. And in this case, that would mean equal access to a full and thorough investigation, which has not happened.
I was just gonna ask you if that was the truck accident last week?
What's that?
Just someone that doesn't have their mic off.
Somebody on the mic.
Yep.
On the...
Didn't turn it off. She did now.
But that's what I'm here about. I still haven't heard anything back. I don't know if I...I can't recall whether or not I read you the Sheriff's Department's response, but it's just full of inaccuracies. You know, like I said before, there were several people there, neighbors, city employees that they could interview, even the police officer who said, "Take the truck," and even the code enforcement officer who said the trucks don't run. And they're trying to work around it, saying that they took the trucks because it's not on a hard surface driveway. The house is built in 51, was approved that way, never had a hard surface driveway. There are years and years and years and years and years of growl since, you know, even after my parents bought it in 63. And then the chilling thing about it is, they took my Volkswagen Beetle, which was parked behind all of it. Because first of all, they threatened to arrest me if I didn't move either way. I said, "Okay." So then they asked me, "Would I move my Beetle?" I said, "No." So they backed a flatbed truck up to my Volkswagen Beetle, which was behind these trucks, parked on the same, as they described, non-hard surface driveway, picked it up on a flatbed, you can see it in the video, took it down the street, set it down and parked it, and then came back and proceeded to take my trucks. The same vehicles, not only my Volkswagen Beetle, but the rest of them are still parked on the supposed non-hard surface driveway. Ninety percent of the people who live on Newell Street don't have a hard surface driveway. There are three houses built by Hawkeye Tech, which was approved by the city, that don't have a full hard surface driveway. As a matter of fact, the red one that sits on the corner of Newell Street and Lynn Street, there's a small portion of cement driveway. It doesn't even have a paved cutout. They have to go through the alleys. The alleys on this side of town don't have a hard surface driveway. In order to get to that alley, they gotta call...they gotta drive over their grass, non-hard surface. There are other houses built in the area, brand new, don't have a hard surface driveway. So, you know, it...no.
It sounds like this all occurred in the city of Waterloo?
Yes, it does. But it's...that's why...that's why I filed for our charges. It's fraud. Look, there's something to be said here. And then I was charged $500. See, if I didn't pay $50 a month, they're gonna throw it against the property. Now, our court system stands to gain from this. And it seems odd that a company that was put in business in '65 by the city of Waterloo, given property out on the river where they're located now, and put in business back then, and started that business, as a matter of fact, violation of the code according to the original owner's own statement in a Waterloo Courier years ago. And since that time, look, 1960s, we didn't see code enforcement. So, all county officials, city officials thought our conduct was legal. We didn't see them in the 1970s. So obviously, they considered our conduct as legal. We didn't see them in the 1980s. So obviously, they thought our conduct was legal. We didn't see them in the 90s. So obviously, again, they thought our conduct was legal. But at the end of the 90s, according to the US government's own USDA GA, historic metal scrap metal charge, scrap metal spiked, '99 to 2001. That's when Maria Tiller, now Maria Downey, right in that time, started working as code enforcement officer and was instrumental in changing the code. Right after that, wow. Here comes now, you're coming in and you're gonna take every...
James, I'm sorry, though, we need to interrupt you for exceeding the three-minute rule.
Yeah, but, you know, I just want...I want the input from the county attorney's offices.
I know you do.
They're saying they have to receive a complaint from the Sheriff's Department.
James, we have...I'm afraid we have no authority over this.
I'm...but you don't have any authority over...but you do, county ordinance says.
This also isn't an agenda item. We shouldn't be commenting on it.
Exactly. You shouldn't be commenting on it. But I came before to get it on the agenda and to get a response from you guys in terms of how this violates that all citizens should receive equal services under the county government.
Well, and I think we mentioned last week, though, this was gonna be something that we had to look into. It wasn't something we were just gonna add to the agenda. We needed to have more information. And I know you're a wealth of information.
Yes, I do. And I can start sending you video footage of this. Like I said, you know, I'm gonna leave you with one comment, two comments, and I'm gonna go. My mother always used to say, "Wherever you see smoke, there's a fire." And I'm gonna say to, you know, the Sheriff's Department and city employees, you know, when you're digging a hole for somebody, you better dig too. Because the hole you dig for them might end up being for you. Now, it's happened before. I'm gonna leave you with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. Anyone else? Anyone else online? Hearing none. We'll move on to years of service awards. Grant?
We have one award today for Mary Anna Robinson for 25 years of service with the Health Department. Is Mary Anna here?
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Hi. Congratulations.
Congratulations, young lady. Congratulations on your years of service and continued service to the county, young lady. Next is claims and payments.
The total bills paid this week are $214,837.40. Most things are routine. There are a couple payments for construction materials, one for $45,431, and another for $10,265 that are probably not as common. And there's also an $11,000 payment for the jail lobby renovations.
Any questions? Move to approve.
Second.
Moving to second. This is the resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
White.
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next is received project updates from department heads and elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Brief update, our county bridge crew has finished their last bridge replacement of the year. This is the Lincoln Road Bridge Project. This was down in the Voorhees area of the county. That finished and opened to the public a week or so ago, and we have finished the grading and will be...have mobilized off that site. Our last remaining order of work is, there's a small culvert on Eagle Road, which we are working to extend that. We just finished paving that road. We are now extending the culvert. Other than that, we are blading the roads, getting the roads ready for our first cold weather, our first frost, and then we are cutting brush as well. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other department head or elected officials? Hearing none. Minutes approved for October 25th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We have a hearing coming up on opening bid for the purchase of steel to be used in a construction on Project L 1802 Rice Road Bridge. Consent agenda by resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. This is the resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
White.
Yes. Resolution adopted. Next is proclamations. This is a resolution to pledge support for Operation Green Light for veterans.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Beeter, would you like to read that, please?
Sure. Whereas the residents of Blackhawk County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces...excuse me. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas Blackhawk County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, AMVETS, Marine Corps League, disabled American veterans, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellows, former service members, access more than $52 billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year, and whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future, and whereas studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service, and whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans, and whereas Blackhawk County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Therefore, be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County. Blackhawk County hereby declares from October through Veterans Day, November 11th, 2022, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Blackhawk County encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence.
Thank you, Mr. Beeter. Yolando, you'd like to add anything to that?
I'm not Yolando.
Oh. I recognize that.
Heidi Warrington, 525 Martin Road here in Waterloo. I'm the chair of the Blackhawk County Veterans Commission. My fellow commissioner and our executive director, Yolando, we so appreciate the support on Operation Green Light. And what I would like to challenge is that we extend it for the whole month of November, even though it's not part of the county resolution, that we'd like to recognize it way beyond Veterans Day. And I think even having it be through Thanksgiving, where as a country we come together regardless of what service, what political party, whatever, but as Americans, it would behoove us to do Operation Green Light for the whole month. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi.
And Yolando Lovelace, Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs. And it's just an honor just to be here today. Grant, those words were chilling. In fact, I'd like to give Grant Beeter kudos because he's the one who started this and gave it the teeth that it needed and get it throughout the county, but also to take advantage, to say thank you, Board of Supervisors, for supporting it. We have a history from Civil War all the way through of great Americans who've served this country. And it's just an opportunity to give back, an opportunity just to put a green light in your window to say thank you through the month of November. Our office has the green light, so if a veteran needs a green light, we purchase some. They can come out and do that. It's just a way of giving back. I'm still reminded of going out to Friendship Village and the establishment that we established with those elderly veterans and to hear some of their stories and the remarkable sacrifices that they've done for their families. You're looking at 90-something years between us three, but it has nothing compared to what some of the greatest generation in World War II, Korea War, Vietnam veterans have went through and sacrificed for their families. So again, thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for supporting the veteran community. And we cherish this moment and will be a lasting effect on all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Yolando.
I have a question. Can we amend our resolution to be for the month?
I think we sure can.
I mean, as long as we're here today and could do it.
All right.
So, that'd be great.
Through the whole month of November, then. Okay. Do I have a second on that?
Yes.
Okay. This is the resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
White.
Yes. Resolution adopted. Thanks again, Grant, and thank you. Next is updates from Ben Dela Gardell, Doing Business as Urban Services, in regards to Washburn Sanitary Sewers.
Morning, Ben.
Morning.
Morning, Board. The first thing I'd like to share with you is that I was at a wastewater conference last week and...
That had to be exciting.
It usually is. Maybe to me only, but...
Hopefully, others at the conference.
Where's the start slideshow button? From the beginning. Okay, here we go. So, I was at a wastewater conference last week, and there was a section about communicating with boards and councils. So, the main lesson was that operators like me find things routine and monotonous, but they could be new and interesting to you. So, my commitment is to have regular, frequent communication with you about what's going on in Washburn. Washburn is never an afterthought to me, although I've had a busy year. I'd like to highlight that all aspects of the system are working properly. As for updates in Washburn, I should start by saying there was a fiber optic construction crew came through town. They were heading, I believe, from Jessup to Waterloo. Included extensive locates because they did cross our sewer lines eight times, and it's a pressure sewer. So, if they hit that, things get messy really quick. They were successful and ran about a half a mile along, parallel with our sewer line. They weren't too close, but there's always a risk when you've got machines underground working.
And they never went over it or under it, Ben?
They went under...they went...well, yeah, they went under us most of the time.
Okay.
These...the eight lines they crossed were mostly just service lines coming from a pump to the main. So, they were able to...but along with that, we've got sewer line and three electric lines as well that traveled between the pumps. So, there's a lot of stuff going on there. But those crews are great, and they had no issues arise from that. We're seeing about three service calls per month, which I consider a great number because we do have 221 active pumps in the system. Next, we are currently conducting our fall discharge from cell two and three. This requires a few extra water samples this fall. We are expected to apply for a new NPDES permit by May 4th, 2023. Our current permit expires October 31st, 2023, which is about a year from now, but we've gotta get ahead of this so that samples are in on time. There is a chance that I wouldn't have results by May 4th next spring for that discharge. So, I chose to do that in this period. Next, I'd like to revisit an issue with grease at a restaurant at 6636 La Porte Road. I was just there last Thursday around noon for a service call. When I pulled the pump, I found the entire cavity filled with chunks of grease. They were hardened chunks that were just years of misuse, I believe, and this is not a normal situation for our pumps to endure. If you look at the structure on the right, it's just kind of a photo, you know, in a photo off Google, but the black line at the top represents where the ground level would be. So, everything that's a black cavity below that is underground. The top of the pump there is about seven feet below grade. These chunks...
I'm sorry, Ben. Is Al here? Is there a graphic on the right that we...
There is. How do I reduce this? There we go.
There you go.
Okay.
I'll move this over here.
So, up here is the ground level. We have electrical and a connector here, and then below the pump, ceiling lid at the top is where all these grease chunks build up and cause issues. So, on the left photo, you can see the pump removed with a chunk of grease there. Middle photo, large chunks of grease down there that I had to break up with a...it's like an ice chipper tool. And then we vacuumed that out, and you see a clean pit, pump pit on the right photo. I do not remember when we were there last, but we did have an issue at one point with a pump that was completely stuck in this same pump station. And at that time, we went through a few code enforcement changes or visits, I believe. And so, along with this, I did visit with the restaurant manager, and they told me that the grease traps are being maintained properly. But I would like code enforcement to follow up with this if we could. I don't know if there's...is there a contact or a little bit of homework somebody could do?
Ben, this is Tom Little.
Yep.
Over the years, we've been out there quite a few times. Waterloo had a program here a few years back, doing inspections for grease traps. And they went out there along with code enforcement and the Health Department. We were pretty...I think they even were close to getting fined out there for that grease. So, they've been inspected, they've made promises, and here you are again. So, yes, we need to send somebody out there again and inspect it, and they need to know that they've had troubles in the past. They can't handle that anymore.
Yep. I do appreciate that input, Tom. I just don't remember. I could probably look it up, but it's been a while. I would say three or four years, maybe five or six, but...
I think it's Waterloo Code Enforcement.
Yes.
It is.
Yeah.
And I think Rory's worked on it. I think he's here today, but I was gonna say, he usually works on the code enforcement issues for us, too. So, he'll be good to follow up.
Okay. Sounds good. So, this next topic was encouraged at the wastewater conference I was at last week. I'm also sharing this because I'm currently reviewing my contracted rates, as I think every industry is these days. It's important to make these tough decisions because many facilities lack the funds to handle catastrophic issues and capital purchases at an increased price because of the current economic state. Major factors that are out of our control are the facilities monitoring, because that's guided by the NPDES permit, and the utility locating, which protects our vital infrastructure from damage, as I was talking about earlier with boring crews coming through town. One of the few things that we do control is the service call quantity. Obviously, I do not control when a service call will happen, but I do have a hand in reducing the number with good maintenance. As I mentioned earlier, approximately 221 active pumps in the system. We do have an average of less than three service calls per month over the last two years. I'd like to see that number continue downward with more analysis, but every single call that I get results in costs from changing the pump and then rebuilding that pump that isn't working. These causes are normally not something that we can easily diagnose, but we do occasionally have flushable wipes build up, just like this grease chunks are. So, I've had those conversations with residents, and they tell their neighbors, hey, you know, if you put those down, it causes a failure and it could back up into our basement, which then is health and hazard, health and property hazard. So, it's also reportable if someone has sewage backup in their basement. So, I have to contact the DNR at that time, follow up with paperwork and all that. So, the figures here, I have...I've just looked through some rates across the state, and I don't know, I think we maybe talked on this last year, but I wanted to revisit it again because it is important. So, I base this on 4,000 gallons per month, which is a rough average of a two-person household. And if you can kind of put it on an average scale here, Waterloo enjoys the lowest water and wastewater rates in the state. So, if you live in Waterloo, you're fairly lucky. This is greatly based on user base and how many com...excuse me, how many accounts that a certain wastewater system would have. So, Washburn has 385 accounts paying $63 quarterly, which generates $97,000 in revenue. And it's not my suggestion, but just as an example, if we were to raise the rate $5 per month to $26 per month, that would generate $120,000 per year in revenue. I'd like to highlight...said that about Waterloo already. So, the city of Rowland here, residents, 1,387 residents paying almost basically $90 per month for sewer. They must have had some type of capital investment that was hard to finance or something like that. But I don't know one of those specific examples, but if we're below average in the state, I think we're doing well. We are very low below average. I don't know what you guys are gonna think, but I do believe it's time to review the rate. So...
Appreciate that, because that is something I think that's been coming up occasionally from some of our discussions.
Yeah. And if you want me to expand on this, I definitely can. But, you know, the eight cities I came up with was, I wanted to show a difference in population and then also the difference in rate. So, it has to do with age of the current system, and then how far out are we planning on rebuilding or upgrading a plant, or some of it's how vast a city is expanding. North Liberty's gone through a lot of changes over the years because of how quickly they expanded, and Ankeny as well. So...
I agree that we need to...I'd like to entertain some proposals on adjusting the rate. I've mentioned it before, I'm happy and supportive to make these investments with the American Rescue Plan, but we can't count on 10, 15, 20 years from now there being those federal dollars when we need to make more investments. And so, a modest increase now would prevent the citizens of Washburn from being in the same boat that the citizens of Rowland are in now. If we have a modest increase, it can build up some savings over these coming years after making this big investment that we're making now.
Has it ever been considered to potentially hook to Waterloo? Might be a silly question, but...
Well, that really doesn't...wouldn't really reduce the cost of...the bigger cost is the pumps. Okay? So, Washburn is such a low elevation that these pumps are required to pump uphill, basically, where our lagoon is. So, our lagoon is relatively cheap to maintain. The water samples and all that are...it adds up, but in Waterloo, it could definitely handle the volume that we have. But as far as...
The cost effective, this is probably the better option for those residents.
I mean, you could probably...you could probably do a lot of analysis on what that would be. But overall, the main cost in Washburn is the pump stations, and those were installed in a forced main type of situation. They act more like a water system where you have a water tower. Pressure pushes it through your faucet. Well, these pumps pressurize and push it out the end of a pipe at our lagoon, and it goes into the pond. So, the elevation is the problem. The DNR and EPA forced this because of an hepatitis A outbreak in the 90s, and they have a lot of ditch water and water...the water table's high there. So, this was kind of...really was a required change in '99, and going with a typical gravity system like Waterloo is not possible down in Washburn. So, I don't think hooking up to Waterloo, you would really gain much as far as cost. So...
And you brought up a good point, too, the ditches and those types of things. Sometimes they're issues, too.
Yeah, they fill up with water. See, Washburn used to be all septic systems, and then flooding would happen there frequently. It still does. Right now, everything's dry. But we'd have water over the top of the intersection in the streets just because of how much rain there is. So, it's a really low-lying area. It was actually nearly affected by the 2008 flood, all the way across from Gilbertville to Washburn. So, it's vital that we have the pumps, but we could outfall to Waterloo if that was ever...if the lagoon is not maintainable. So, another thing, I guess, about the rate increase, I think a lot of people would think that increasing some of these rates is not caring about them, not nurturing them or whatever in that way. But actually, I feel like building up reserves in advance of an issue or maintenance that needs to happen so that we don't have a $90 a month rate in 10 years because we weren't planning ahead for that. So, I see that more of a caring thing where we're nurturing that and growing a fund that can care for us in the future. So...
I think what we've done in the past, and I think we should do it this time, too, is I think we should form a committee of some county, and then also should have some residents of Washburn, seeing that they have an interest or an investment in... residents of Washburn, seeing that they have an interest or an investment in this situation. We have raised rates over the years since I've been on the board, two, maybe three times. And it wasn't too favorable each time for the obvious reason. So I think the right route is to go is to put together a committee and they can not only discuss the possible rate increase, but maybe possible other avenues on how they could operate the Washburn facility out there, whether it's been a long time since we put that facility out for bid. So we have a lot of options. So I think it'd be a good idea to put together a committee and include at least a couple, if not more, of Washburn residents, seeing that they're the ones that pay the total bill. The account's been running pretty low here lately in the last few years. So we knew we had to do something. But with this major million-dollar increase for this remodeling of the pond, you're not gonna have enough balance in there ever to do that. It wouldn't have been for ARPA money being potentially used. You couldn't raise the rates high enough to ever cover that. So I think that's be the right way to go. We've done it in the past. And those are the people that are paying the bills out there. It's not the county. It's the residents of Washburn. Ben, you're also running another facility in Fairbank, aren't you?
Yeah, that's my full-time employment place, yes.
Do you have another one?
No.
And do you have a help here? Or I mean, obviously, you don't do it yourself.
No, yes, I've got three payroll employees.
How many with the Washburn?
That's only Washburn. I don't contract for Fairbank. That's a regular hourly paid job. They allow me the freedom to leave when I need to do Washburn things. And it's a pretty good situation for Fairbank and Washburn. But that's, yeah, that's.
How long have you been doing Fairbank? I guess I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, I got hired there in April 2021.
2021?
So, yeah, Washburn's never been a full-time thing for me. I couldn't make it full-time in Washburn and I don't want to make that full-time either. But one of the last, I guess, do you have any more comments, Tom? I have another comment here.
Well, go ahead and finish. I do have one more question regarding the pumps, but go ahead and finish your presentation.
I was gonna mention all this. You're very familiar with the Washburn residents, probably much more so than we are. And I think before, when we've tried to put a committee together, finding the people to be, serve on that. And obviously, I think it's very important that Washburn people do. If you have some suggestions or recommendations for the board to consider, and some of that would be helpful, I think.
Okay. You thinking, you thinking?
You stop in and talk to Kayla. She's probably, we've got the old list of people that served on it before. So that would be a good starting.
Some of those, I know some of them are not there anymore.
No, some weren't interested in.
But a few of them are still there.
Yeah. Yeah. The population's definitely changed a lot there in the last 20 years. But my last comment, I guess I was gonna be that these rates here, Washburn's rate is the only fixed rate that is here. So all the other cities are based off of partially usage and what their water bill is. So it's either by per thousand gallon or per cubic foot. So I had to do a little bit of calculating. But I guess it was worth mentioning that Washburn, Washburn rate is flat rate and the other towns are variable depending on how much water you use.
Interesting. I'm glad you put the rates together.
Another way of structuring a wastewater bill.
It's good to see how low we are. I'm kind of surprised that Washburn's as low as they are compared to.
Yeah. I didn't do a statewide search. Like I said, I wasn't looking for high. I wasn't looking for low. I was looking for the variation in population. And then some of the really small towns like Washburn, they don't have a website that I can go on and see their wastewater rates. So it's just available information that I had. And I think it was pretty representative. Like I said, I think if we're below average for the state of Iowa, that's great. Of course, we'd like to be the lowest like Waterloo, but we do not have the user base that Waterloo has.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else unless you have something for me.
Thank you. Good report. Thank you.
No, thanks.
Moving on to contracts and agreements, this is a resolution at the statement of completion and final acceptance of work for project LFM 5004, 7X07. Paving on Grundy Road be approved and direct the chair to sign up for same and authorize the director auditor to make final payment to an amount of $30,000, but the total project cost of $3,776,153.12, as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer. Project contracted at $4,245,231.28. Totally working days specified, 70. Working days used, 55. Liquidated damages assessed, zero contractor. Aspro Incorporated Waterloo. So moved.
Second.
Moved to second. Kathy?
Good morning again, board. As we get to this phase of the project, as is customary, I'd like to give you a brief slideshow, just give you some of the project details before you accept the project. And we sign off, you sign off to pay the final retainage to our contractor. So just very briefly, let me take about seven or eight minutes to show you a few slides and walk you through the project again. As you know, Grundy Road was a gravel road. Carries traffic between Highway 20 and Zeneta Road. It's approximately five miles long. The traffic on the very northern mile of that portion was our highest gravel road count in the county at 320 vehicles per day as of the 2017 DOT count, which are our most current traffic counts. And then as you got towards Zeneta, the traffic, of course, decreased to about 120 vehicles per day, which is still about average or a little higher than average in Blackhawk County for gravel road. There are several hog confinements on the route. There are heavy loads servicing those hog confinements every day. There are about 30 to 40 people who work at those hog confinements. So lots of heavy truck traffic. We've gotten numerous frost boils over the year and the road is continuing, was continuing to get wider, just blading it every year, pouring rock on it and blading it again and again for years and years. We were spending, in the last five years, we were spending approximately $30,000 a year to haul rock and place rock on that road. By our 28-year agreement with Grundy County, this portion of Grundy Road is our maintenance. And they take care of the southern portion, south of that, on Grundy Road. It was decided just to, by both boards of supervisors, that we would research, we would pave the road. We would grade and pave the road. As you know, it was broken out into two portions, the grading project and the paving project. The paving was this year, 2022, grading was 2021. We have not completed the paperwork for the grading portion of the roadway, so we are not ready to close that project out. So we're doing a little bit of, this is a little bit backwards, but this is the way the paperwork has worked out with our contractors. The quantities used in this project, the paving project, were 28,000 tons of Homex asphalt, over 2,200 tons of binder, of the asphalt binder, and then 25,000 tons of shoulder rock. The finished alignment is 12-foot lanes and 6-foot shoulders. It was awarded to Aspro about a year ago, and the contract provided for 70 working days and $1,500 per day of liquidated damages. And you all know, this was split 50-50 with Grundy County. Just a few slides here now. The first slide shows the very first bit of asphalt being placed on this roadway. And then this would be the end of the first day's paving. You can look towards the north and see the Highway 20 overpass there. This was the typical paving configuration for Aspro with the paving truck, the truck carrying the asphalt, excuse me, and then the asphalt shuttle buggy in the middle, and then the paver on the left, excuse me, on the right hand of the paving train here. And the shuttle buggy serves to remix the asphalt as it's going into the paving machine and keeps it at a consistent temperature so that can be, we can get maximum compaction, which is equivalent to getting a longer life out of our pavements by getting more compaction. Just, there were, there were six intersections on this project, five of them on the Blackhawk County side and then one T-intersection on the Grundy County side of the project. You can see the intersections are a huge improvement. They have very large radiuses, which is very good for all the agricultural traffic that is in that corridor. Aspro was able to work with numerous homeowners along the way and they were able to pay Aspro on the side to get some improvements to their driveways. Several of the hog confinements had substantial improvements with paving through, working with Aspro. So that was a plus for those residents as well. This is a photo of placing the intermediate layer on the roadway last, this past summer. And you can see the tack coat cuiring on the right-hand side of the pavement there. And that is placed before the new layer of asphalt is paved to get those two layers to bond together. This is after the paving is complete. Of course, we are placing the shoulder rock. Our plan's called for 6-foot shoulder in that, in the corridor. And then some of the last few items of work were the pavement markings, as well as the rumble strips being ground into the pavement. If you recall, in September, we had a ribbon cutting ceremony where both boards of supervisors were in attendance. And this is the actual cutting of the pink ribbon there. And this is a photo of all the attendees who showed up that day. It was a beautiful day to celebrate the opening of this roadway. And then just finally, the final contract details, the project did come in about 11% under the contract cost. The final cost was, as you said, Craig, $3.76 million. Only 55 days were used by Aspro, so no liquidated damages are to be assessed. And I would recommend that you approve the final acceptance and we are allowed to pay Aspro the remaining retainage. And it's turned out to be just a beautiful road. And I think it will give the residents in that part of the county another way to get around. It's really improved the traffic flow down there and it should last for 30 or 40 years, we're hoping. So can I answer any questions?
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Great project.
Motion on this?
Yep.
Okay. This resolution, please answer your name and scott.
Dralka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution at the best bid received from Gallagher. Human resources and compensation consulting for a classification and compensation study with a bid of $72,500 be approved and for the chair to sign the contract, as recommended by Amanda Fessenmeyer, human resource director. Good morning, Amanda.
Good morning. How are you all?
Good.
Okay. So I don't think I really had an opportunity to discuss this RFP and the bids that we received. But so I wanted to just.
I think in October, we tabled it. I think at the action on October 4th, as we tabled the, or I guess amended the agenda. And so you probably didn't present that information.
Thank you.
That's, that'd be great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So back in August, we had a couple discussions about the county-wide classification and compensation study. And it was during the August 23rd board meeting that the board of supervisors authorized the release of the RFP to solicit bids from consultants for this, the purpose of evaluating all of our jobs. I had discussed at that time that we currently have a structure right now that was developed in 1981. And at that time, the board members were very open to understanding the need for us to have a evaluation of our positions, our classification, and the wages when it comes to how competitive we are, as well as address pay inequities that have developed over that four-decade time period. So we're at the point now where we've received bids and we had a competitive bid process. We received six bids from consultants with expertise in this area. And Gallagher's the recommendation that HR is bringing forward. We felt they had the strongest proposal to meet the county's needs and challenges. They came in at about 72,500. That's the high end. On the low end, there are some things that we could take or reduce that bid down to, the minimum bid being about $59,000.
Could you elaborate? Or maybe that's, I don't know, are you prepared to address what those are?
Sure.
Just curious.
Yep. So they, one of the options is having each employee or complete a PDQ, a physician description questionnaire, which is something that HR currently does when we evaluate jobs for classification. That was an additional $6,000 to use PDQs. If we do not want to use the PDQs, then that would reduce that by 6,000. The other additional cost was to use, they're going, they would complete a custom survey for us with market wages across similar sectors, both locally and across different geographics such as the Midwest. And they would, they could use published data sources, which are a bit more expensive. And that was also additional cost that rose that total bid to 72,500. And that was also in the breakdown of their RFP.
Amanda, the other bids, you said there were six total. The other five, were they lower than Gallagher?
They were about right in them. Some were high, some were lower.
Then, higher than Gallagher?
Yes. Yeah, I had one that was up of 122,000, one that was 84,000. There was one that came in at 57,000, but they required an annual subscription, which was an additional $9,000. So they were about the same close within Gallagher. And then we had one that was extremely low. It was about 40, around 40,000. And just based on reference checks and the completeness of their proposal, we felt that the best bid would be awarded to Gallagher. The second finalist though, we did have a second finalist that was Conjuring Associates. Both Gallagher and Conjuring have worked with Iowa organizations or municipalities for the past decade. But Conjuring uses a platform, or I guess a method that is done by the federal government and one that is readily available. And I felt that it's very similar to the system that we currently use, which is not quite as modern or current. And whereas Gallagher, they propose a method called the decision band method, which helps to really eliminate pay inequities across various departments at different levels of job classifications. So I kind of came down to with Conjuring that I felt that their tool was something that we already pretty much have in place and didn't want to spend substantial money on something that we currently, that is very similar to what we currently have.
How will we pay for the study?
So we discussed that during those August board meetings. I originally had it in a request as an ARPA project under the lost revenue, because it's not something that qualifies under ARPA for any of the other, I guess, categories. When I spoke with the former finance director, he said general supervision has typically budgeted about half a million dollars in there and uses about 300,000 on an annual basis. So that, and I do think it makes sense to be budgeted from the board office, considering this is a county-wide initiative. HR does not have the budget for this in our current fiscal year '22 budget. So, and then it was also discussed during the August meetings about possibly, if needed, to really pull it out of reserves. But we do have a lot of turnover this year. We're at, we've currently had 60 staff leave our organization, which is the highest in the last several years. And we still have two more months to go. So there's certainly even savings in some of that turnover that could be absorbed. That's a discussion as well for possibly funding this initiative. Then the, depending on what the actual results come back as, that's a different funding discussion for the board and the finance director to work that out, depending on what the survey and study outcomes are. And so I guess there's multiple options here. It's just as to what the board is comfortable with.
From a funding standpoint, yeah. I think we have options. That's good to know. I don't know if you want to comment about that at all, Michelle, or?
I have not. Billy and I looked a little bit at the board budgets and I'm not familiar with the numbers that the former director was giving you. So I don't know that I can speak to that one. The lost revenue and reserves are certainly options to the board if you choose. And the turnover also, that obviously results in savings unless people are getting temps or filling those, you know, using other funds. So it does seem like you have options to do that. And the ARPA money being a one-time funding source, this feels kind of appropriate. And the ARPA money being a one-time funding source, this feels kind of appropriate for that because this is a one-time study.
At this level, right, I mean, we just haven't done one for such a long time. If we would have any future studies, it would be much reduced, might just be like a-
Yeah, an update.
A check, like a five-year or a, you know, seven-year check, something like that.
So this one's really more extensive because of the 40 years, or we said 1981 or whenever it was done before, because of that and to have a-
Yeah, I don't-
More accurate.
Why would that enter in? Why would that enter in, the difference in years? If I went five years or 40 years, what's the difference?
Well, what's the difference?
Yeah, they gotta do more work.
No, I'm sorry, so if they, if we, so this is just a, it's much more comprehensive because it's, it's evaluating all of our jobs. And then if we go from five years now, that would be more like a market study where you're just looking at, okay, has the market moved significantly? It wouldn't be, we gotta look at our jobs and reevaluate them again. So it would be a lot less work. It would just be mostly the board, you know, wanting to know, are we still competitive in terms of the market? But-
If I might add, I think, you think about that 40 years, computers have completely changed, at least the finance world, how we do our work in that 40 years. And so probably it's changed other departments too, and that's why it might be valuable to, to evaluate those jobs and see what people's responsibilities are now, because I, I think you're gonna find they're significantly different from before 1980.
And our unions especially, that's the bulk of our workforce here. They know they're locked in till June 30th of 2024, but we're gonna be sitting at the negotiation table with them a year from now. And I can almost guarantee with the board really supportive of the unions and the chapter 20 changes to allow those permissible items such as wages to be negotiated, we're going to definitely see wages come up in this next go-around with not just public safety this time, non-public safety as well. And, and that's one thing in the RFP, I did mention that we did a market study for our largest agency, the law enforcement division. So, you know, this is just trying to then, they're included in it, but I don't anticipate those to be dramatically changing, especially at all levels. That market study was done through the sheriff, down the command, chain of command, to sergeant level even, so.
How much difference do you think we are than any other agency in comparison to size? Every place I talked to has lost an enormous number of employees over this COVID and all this other stuff that's going on. And the loss of 60 people in a year seems big, but in reality, you know, what's, what, you know, is there a reason why most of them are leaving? Do they say it's the wages?
A lot of them say wages, a lot of them say work-life balance.
Do what?
Work-life balance, you know, we do, and I would say, so those are two prominent categories when people say they're leaving. Also, I see opportunity for growth. And that's one thing that this study can also help identify career ladders and with the union roles or the non-bargaining roles to help support that opportunity for growth with the county. We do have pretty, like even in some offices, such as my own, you have HR specialist and then a director, you don't really have a actual ladder. So those would be helpful to identify through this study. But I did look at, just across different industries, because you're right, there are people that are, other organizations that are losing staff. Across government, that's still, they say it hasn't really been a crisis mode, which is around like 10%. We're currently trending at about 18 to 20% for Black Hawk County. So that's upwards of where like manufacturer, manufacturing industries are, retail is really high. So we're, healthcare is also high, but we're, so in comparison to our industry, I would say we're fairly high when it comes. And, and we're seeing it at all levels, we're seeing it from entry level to supervisory, experienced, bargained employees to director levels and managers.
But Amanda, haven't we been, you know, you cited we haven't done a study since '82, but haven't we been doing revaluations on jobs up till right now? I know there's a position in one department, or a couple of departments, what they were finally doing is changing the title and changing it to a different title, and therefore there was a bump. Engineers' office had one, the sheriff had a clerk that went from one to two. We hired a finance director, considerable increase from what we were paying the one just six weeks ago. So we really have been doing reclassifications of the different departments over time and even recently. I think what the departments learned to do was to slap a different title on there, which therefore was in a different pay raise. And therefore, that's how they got their raise. So in essence, we have been actually doing reviews, plus we used to do studies too on the job, where you would go and do a study on the job and rate it and so forth. So it's not like we've been stagnant and haven't been doing anything, there's been quite a few increases.
Well, I actually, I can tell you from my experience, the last reclass, I'm trying to think that I really brought to you guys. And I've been in the HR department for six years. I know Colleen Shipper got a reclass to the general assistance coordinator. There may have been some job title changes to more align the job title with the duties, but that didn't result in a higher classification. The board of health had one where they reduced out a manager, an oral health program manager in another position, and then they aligned their community health program manager. But definitely, I mean, I think there's been ones that have been kind of picked and selected, but across the entire workforce, I don't know the last time that we've done one that's a true county-wide. And, and when we pick some and do some, it then kind of creates these inequities. So why did we pick this one, but then we don't look at the other ones around it? And maybe that's something that we can learn from this study, is that how to maintain this and have a more robust system that HR is looking at these more frequently, or not just HR, the board. But yeah, we, we've maybe adjusted one, but then we don't necessarily look at the ones around it, do they need adjusting to? And oftentimes, it kind of comes down to the person in the department, if they want to push for that person to be reevaluated. And some people are, are not willing to speak up, or they're fine with where they are, I guess, or they don't think it's worth it. Because oftentimes, what we tell people when it comes to reclass, we say, well, what's changed in your job? And sometimes it's not so much that things have changed, but the, just the market has really changed. And that's where I feel like this study can help you guys identify your market. That's what I feel like's been missing.
Are you doing any reclassifications now? It used to be the department that would request HR to come down and do a study because change in the job. Are you doing any of them anymore?
Yeah, I got, I sent you guys a list of like 15 that have been requested this year.
And the one that was on there that I pointed out today was a clerk that was increased from one to two. And that was just within the last two years.
I don't know who that clerk increased to one to two. I'm not sure off that list. Is it, do you know the department?
Yeah, it was administrative aid, I believe, that went from a one to a two. It was a request from the department head or the elected official.
Invited, okay.
Anyway, is there, do you think that this potentially could turn into being additional cost once we get the study back?
Well, if we're below market and if the board wants to pay to market or pay closer to market, then I would expect that that's gonna, yeah, wages are gonna continue to climb, we're gonna see union wages climb. I would definitely anticipate that if, but it, there is a chance that we get this study back and Black Hawk County looks great. And we don't have to make a significant modifications. But in my experience here and performing compensation studies, we, we generally tend to lag and lag where we're misaligned, where it's 10, 15% below market wages. So it really boils down to what the board wishes to do with that information as to whether-
But you're, but you're saying wages haven't been climbing now?
Huh?
Wages haven't been climbing now?
I think we've just, they have, no, I, I mean, we've, we've done increases, but I think that we have been lagging for a long time. And I think when you go four decades without having a county or a organizational-wide study, then we tend, that's where the lagging, you know, continues to, and moves forward into the future.
I'll, I'll offer a motion to approve the best bid received from Gallagher, human resources for the compensation study. And I just want to thank the HR department for all their work bringing this to this. I find, I think that this information will be really helpful as, as we set the budgets for the next coming, next number of years. And so, and I would add to the resolution that we'll pay for the study using lost revenue funds from American Rescue Plan.
Yeah, I'll second that. I was, I know when we tabled this, like say in October, October 4th, about a month ago when it was tabled, I said, I think we had some questions and things that we wanted to have answered. And, and then when it didn't come back up on the agenda, I said there was a lot of interest and concern, I think, from department heads and those that are needing to fill positions and are seeing changes in their departments. And, you know, the question just kept coming up, are we going to be doing it? And if not, why not? And because I couldn't answer that, I said, yeah, but that's probably something that we should address if there are reasons or something to not do it, because we have been supporting you as far as getting the RFP done. I think there were four of us that had said it was something we wanted to go forward with, and if that's changed, then so be it. But I, yes, I, I think it's, it's after 1981, it's certainly time we need to be doing this. Forty years is probably, I wish we'd done it 20 years ago if we have to have longevity in between. But yeah, I, I want to see where we're at in the market. I think there are some positions, as Tom mentions, there probably are some positions, maybe we are in the market. I, I'm hoping we are, that we're not off on all of them. And there's about 50 positions we're looking at, particularly in the non-bargaining, correct?
Right, yeah, there's about, and that's, yeah, the, especially some of the newer positions that we've brought on, I don't anticipate that, I mean, we have tried to, within that scoring mechanism, make sure that they're aligned to the market. You know, we don't, so I don't anticipate that every position is going to need adjustment. But yeah, for non-bargaining, we're looking at about 50 to 55 positions that can be addressed in the next budget. And then for the remainder of the workforce, the bulk of our workforce being union, that will be for the following budget session, but, and also negotiations.
And this just really gives us the information to go forward on how we want to plan or if we, what kind of a plan we need to do or look at, or if we want to, so.
Did I, did I hear that this, didn't I hear from somebody earlier, this did not qualify for ARPA money?
I said it didn't qualify under like those eight categories, like it's not, it's only qualifies as lost revenue. I don't, in working with the ARPA committee, it wasn't something that really fell under like a pandemic criteria, I guess.
I think initially, we just said ARPA, it probably would work for ARPA, and then later found out it didn't in those categories. And lost revenue was the one that it would work in if we wanted to use it, but yeah.
You know, since the time I've been here, I haven't had, heard of, I haven't had one person come to my office over the years I've been here and complain about their wages, because in reality, the last 20 years since I had space in nearby, I was a supervisor, but we give cost of living raises, cost of living raises keep up with the economy. We're, we're dealing with a really different situation right now. You drive anywhere in town, people are looking for employees because they want more money.
Well, you need a-
And sometime, someplace, it's gonna have to stop because it's gonna bankrupt everybody.
And, you know, I think some of our people, there was a time where non-bargaining, and there's people that remember when non-bargaining was frozen and did not receive anything, but the, and that's where I think the drastic inequities occur. So it's a, it's a smaller group of people.
So why don't we just look at that like they did at where I used to work years ago? They, they took it one-on-one, you had a, you had a problem with what you thought you were making, you weren't happy with it. I never had a problem with my wages, I was happy with them. You earned your money there, you earn your money here, that's what you get paid.
I think it's a little tougher with all of our information being so public and people knowing they have to come and justify it to the board. You know, and also justify to, I mean, I, I want to support people, I don't want to overpay, but I want to be, you know, to where we should be. And, and some people, you know, it's just not their comfort lever to come and advocate for themselves, I guess, I'll just put it that way. But the unions, you know, originally I did start with this just being a non-bargaining effort, but I felt that given, you know, everything following the pandemic and how much the workforce has changed and the workforce expectations, I just felt that it was important to include the unions as well, especially that we are heading into negotiation, negotiation season here in about a year. But I-
And hopefully they remember how good we were to them to-
Yeah.
What, what we've done to them in the past, we haven't hurt them a bit, we work with them.
Yep.
Have you run this by our labor attorney on the contracts, on what you proposed to do?
Mike Galloway?
Yeah.
Yes, and he's very supportive that Black Hawk County takes on this initiative, as he's been with us for a long time.
And open contracts?
No, no, go to the table a year from now with the data. We're not gonna, I'm not advocating for opening contracts, that was what was done for law enforcement. But this would be strictly next year, about this time we start negotiation season, and to have that data prepared so that when we go to the table, that we're prepared as the employer. And, because they will undoubtedly have their own data as well. And, but no, not to open contracts, because those are locked in until June 30th of 2024.
You know, I don't have a problem, we have great employees, I've said that from the day I've been here. The only thing I somewhat disagree is we've been increasing salaries. People have been getting hired at midpoint or above midpoint compared to the bottom, either the request by the HR office or the departments. We just had a new hire position that increased about $30,000. I mean, we've been increasing positions all along. And I don't criticize anybody for, for trying to do this, but there's only one body that has to answer to the people of Black Hawk County, the taxpayers, and that's the five supervisors. The rest of the people, you know, I'd want everything I could get also, and they just don't realize or don't know, or maybe they don't care. But we are in tough times right now. And you can say, well, this is coming out of the lost revenue of ARPA money, it's still tax money. Maybe it could go elsewhere, but go to the grocery store. I mean, the heating is gonna go up, the gasoline, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there. That's why I wasn't against this, my only suggestion was we take it to budget in two months. We talk about it and have a plan on what we want to do if we do the study and where we go from there. And we'd have a better idea, and it just seems like we're putting it out there that we've had wages frozen for 40 years, and that's not the case. We just hired a position with an increase of $30,000, come on.
But that person also came with extensive experience. And so, and that's where some of this is that our, when we try to attract employees and we say, well, we can hire you to midpoint, but they've got 20-plus years of experience. And if they were here working that whole time, they'd probably be in the latter half of that, of that range. And sometimes our ranges are so misaligned to the market, that even when you bring someone up to midpoint, it's entry level. And that's just, that's kind of the reality that we're operating in right now. And I think what's, I, I definitely understand where you're coming from. I think that, just also though, with our workforce, we do have outstanding employees. They provide phenomenal services to our taxpayers, to the residents here. And we want to keep that strong talent here. And this year, like I said, 61 people have left our organization. Last year, we had about, what was it, 50 people leave. During the pandemic, we had 60 people leave, which was kind of unusual, but 42 people left in calendar year 2019. So we're, we're losing, our turnover is increasing. And I think the wages are just the most basic component of our rewards program here and one that I think we just need to look at.
That's one point where, and I'm, that'll be my last statement, but that's where I do agree with you, Amanda. They are not leaving of wages. I went through some of them surveys and we saw different reasons why people are leaving, and it's not wages. and it's not wages. Uh, why people aren't taking jobs, I have no idea, I think it's going to come around one of these days, but they're leaving for multiple reasons. I mean, I, I can count, I don't know how many employees I've talked to that left, it wasn't wages, it was other things that was involved. So to put it solely on wages, like you're trying to do, I think is, is a mistake, and that, that's it then. But like I said.
To be fair, I'm not, I didn't say just wages, I said work-life balance initially, when Supervisor White mentioned that. And I know that it's not always wages, the government sector is unique in that, you know, we don't have full remote options. Um, you are tied to, um, you know, very specific operations, um, and performing, you know, civic duty in a way that you don't get bonuses, you don't get car loans, you don't get, so there's several things that, yes, um, drive why people choose to leave, um, but I would say the top three are wages, work-life balance, and opportunity for growth. And I think, um, those are all important factors, um, but no, I, I, I mean, we have to somehow determine, you know, what's our plan to try and retain and attract people. Um, because I do think 60 people leaving this year is pretty, it's, that's a high number, it's just, that's what the data shows, so.
Yeah, and I, I, I agree with you, Amanda, what's just said, but we don't give bonuses because we're not John Deere's, we don't make profits. The county does make profits, what it does is it pays employees by taxes. So we don't give bonuses, we want to make sure our people are adequately paid to the market value, but also, we, it's a kind of a slippery slope, we have to watch out, because though we are sitting somewhat well now, are we going to be that way in three years from now and have to drastically raise taxes? That's not your concern, that's my concern as elected official, the overseer of the finances of Black Hawk County.
Sure, and it still is my concern, Tom, because the workforce, they meet the needs of the taxpayers, and, and so it is, I know it's not, we don't have the same, I am concerned about, uh, taxes, I don't want to out, overpay or, or, um, overtax or any of those things, I, um, rely on the county just the way that other taxpayers do, but, um, I do agree with your statement about, you know, adequate pay to, to the market, and that's really what, in essence, this effort is for.
Making sure we are adequately paying our staff, Tom.
Right, and believe, there will be people following this study that will not get a recommend for change in their salary, both union and non-bargaining. And there will be some that may even say, we have to freeze you for a while because you're above market, and then there will be some that are below market. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second on the floor, right?
Correct.
Yes.
This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Liddle?
No.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
White?
No.
Moving on to a resolution that the 2022 Weed Commissioners report, be approved and directed to charity sign for same as recommended by Tony Woods, submitted by Tony Woods, Black Hawk County Weed Commissioner. Tony?
(laughing).
Want to add anything to that?
Tony?
Griffin Savalka, the roadside biologist, um, just wanted to kind of talk over that. We did see, um, and continued, um, our thistle problems in the roadways, um, with new construction, and also with, um, just regular areas. Um, we've also seen a big increase in our brush this year and through past years, um, it's becoming more and more of a hazard for roadway users. And we did have one complaint this year, um, for poison hemlock, um, a, um, landowner came and, to us and had a complaint that, uh, an adjacent landowner had a bunch of this in his waterway, and, uh, we recommended, uh, what to spray and how to take care of that. Um, it was sprayed and taken care of, um, earlier this, uh, this fall. So from there, um, we also have, on the back, um, of kind of what we spent this year on our spray, um, we spent 11,703 cents, um, and this was a increase, um, decision at the last to purchase, um, some more chemical to, um, be able to help control some of that brush. Uh, we demoed a brush head to where, um, following the brush head, we would spray the stumps, um, for further years' control.
So does all the counties do this?
Yes, um, probably more extensively than, um, than we do currently. Um, we, most counties have, um, one of these drum brush heads that will go through and basically clearcut these brush heads, you know, either at obstruction or a direct hazard if there was an accident or anything like that.
I can see that, yeah.
And then from there, they will go and spray those stumps to treat them, and then come back the next year when they're smaller and more manageable to kill, they'll go through and spray those and be able to manage that over a longer time period instead of letting them get out of a manageable state.
So we weren't doing that then in Black Hawk County?
Um, we, we currently are, um, doing that. Um, I know a lot of the main focus was on intersections and hard surface roads where our main traffic is utilized. And so that, you know, since I was hired and, you know, driving around the county, um, and seeing, you know, what we've done and the areas that, um, we have a lot of waterways, um, bodies of water in the county, the Cedar River and all of the creeks and tributaries that run into it, you know, those are really prone areas and, um, for, you know, trees and noxious weeds to come up, and also, you know, that's going to accelerate the growth there with available water and the marsh areas as well, too. That's going to increase the, the growth and, you know, and sometimes it, you know, we, we only had, you know, one person spraying and one person in a skid steer, and, you know, those guys can only work so long, so. And it, it has jumped on us and become, you know, a bigger problem than we realized.
So you cut and then you spray?
Correct.
And then you go back and cut again?
Then you go back and spray it when, like it re-sprouts, if it re-sprouts, if it's not completely dead, because a lot of these, um, um, brush are, um, what they call rhizobial, um, root structure, so they're all connected underneath, so they're all living together as one. So a lot of times, if you don't get one killed, it will re-sprout and come back up. So we've got, um, per se, like willows, um, are a big problem, and that's kind of, they have the same root structure that I was describing there, so. If we don't get it all killed or don't, you know, or we damage it enough, it will re-sprout and, you know, we'll have to come back and apply.
Go back and talk about the guy, the farmer that you.
Sure.
That he, he was spraying his water, in his water?
No, so, uh, like a open ditch or a waterway, like we, um, in the ag community call it. Um, so he had some on, on his ag land where the filter strips, they call it filter strips that will run along, he had some of that in his, in those grass strips. So we had a adjacent landowner come and.
Complain.
Complain about that, which poison hemlock is becoming more and more of a problem in area counties here, since I haven't, wasn't here during the summer, I didn't really get to see the, the full maybe problems that we have, um, of those noxious weeds, but I, I have noticed that, um, you know, just from what Tony Woods has said, you know, from, um, you know, sprang thistles and, um, some poison hemlock and things like that, that those things are not even, you know, countywide, but statewide and honestly, US-wide, is becoming more and more of a problem.
So what's the biggest problem of them, hemlock, is that the biggest, worst one?
Canada thistle is probably our biggest problem, and some common, um, ag agriculture weeds, um, that just don't get sprayed along the roadside, or between our right-of-way and the, in that farmer's field, so. I'm, and I've got a.
Slide.
Slideshow, yep, to show you. And this kind of goes over kind of what I have, um, and what my position is going to be doing, since, kind of really haven't formally talked to you guys about that. Um, so my one-to-five-year goals, um, here is to spray a quarter of the county each year, um, and that's going to help reduce, um, those broad, that brush and noxious weeds, um, in our county, and also, um, be able to make our roadway safer, as long, and along with cutting those larger trees and brush with the, the secondary roads crew. Um, continuing doing our seeding projects with our new, um, roadway projects, um, like Rundy Road and, um, Lincoln Road Bridge, um, that will be something that will be continued as well as our ditch cleanings to promote and create native habitats for not only, um, the wildlife that we have here in the county, but also, um, for our roadway users as something, you know, maybe to break up the drive if it's a long drive or anything like that, that, you know, promotes that native habitat, but also the scenic beauty that it does possess. Um, in that timeframe, I'm going to be updating our, um, county's, um, IRVM plan, which is, helps us get our free native seed that we get every year if we have, um, a plan, and also helps us, um, get grant, uh, funding for equipment and other purchases that we so need. Um, and then our five-year goal, um, would, you know, build this, you know, within our five-year goal would be, um, for equipment would be to build our spray truck, um, to be able to spray a quarter of our county, um, get these spray logging systems, the spray logging systems are there to, um, show us where we've gone over, and if we have any complaints that, uh, a, say a farmer says we sprayed their beans and we killed them, well, we can go back in our spray logging system and say, we weren't actually in that area at that date, and it helps us, um, you know, maybe litigate the, um, confrontation of, um, anything in the court of law of that situation. Um, also replacing our hydrocedar, um, it is pretty old, and it does have some leaks. Um, be able to get, um, some prescribed fire equipment, um, because with those native habitats, um, and seeding, that, those need to be managed and to be able to upkeep those, um, prescribed burning is something that is very vital to rejuvenate those. Um, some smaller utility tractor or, and, uh, a newer wood chipper in the future. This was supposed to be the first slide, but Black Hawk County has 200 miles of hard surface roads, which equates to about 2,121 acres to manage. Um, and then we have about approximately 515 miles of gravel roads, which equates to about 2,496 miles for us to manage. Um, and, you know, total acres to manage is just shy of 5,000 acres of public right-of-way to be able, for me to manage, kind of on my, for the most part, on my own. And to be able to spray and manage a quarter of the county is about just shy of 1,200 acres for me to cover in basically a timeframe from April to September. Um, so I'm going to kind of jump into the current roadways, um, that we've got, and kind of talk about each picture and what we're seeing here. Um, so this is off a Union and C-57 intersection, um, close to the river. Again, um, as I explained, you know, those are really good pathways for those trees and shrubs to grow. Um, there you can see one large tree that is kind of growing up, um, right next to that power line, um, that is a tree that is probably 20 to 40 years old. Um, so that's something that is a direct, you know, hazard to a roadway user if they were to lose control and go into that ditch.
So doesn't the power company take care of that?
So that.
Like you in the city?
So there is things that they can do, yes, we can work with them to help.
Let them know.
You know, cut them down or at least top them so we can take care of them.
Okay.
Um, and this particular area, when they did put new power lines in, they did that about 20 years ago, or two, 20 to 25 years ago. Um, with this area, it is very dense, and, you know, it's going to take multiple years of application and, you know, labor to be able to get this to a manageable state. And this is the other side of the road, um, kind of.
So basically, it sounds like we haven't been doing anything for the last 20 years?
That's not the case at all. We, we are running on a, you know, basically a two-man crew, and with no real, you know, background knowledge of really what, how to manage it, and really what is going on in those, you know, environments. You know, with my expertise and schooling, I am going to be able to say, you know, this is how we can get it done, this is how we can be effective in getting it done, and by utilizing that, we can, we can spend less time in the future by really trying to get it to a manageable state.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So basically, we were just appointing a weed commissioner by name only, and that was about it for the last 20 years.
And he had some experience, yes, um, and that, you know, was a lot better than just having somebody, you know, just in there.
The roadside biologist that we, like, say that you are for.
Right. Excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Going forth, um, this is on C-57, um, and there is, this, um, image kind of shows kind of the direct, um, you know, obstruction that those, that that has in that roadway, of that landowner coming in and out of his driveway. You know, he's unable to see if he's backing out or if he has to, um, you know, whatever it may be, to pull into his driveway, he can't see, and also is, you know, direct hazard. Um, here, this is on, also on C-57, on that corner intersection, um, there's only a few pieces of brush in there, and, and this is what I would call, you know, it still poses a hazard, but it also is at a manageable state. Um, we could take care of those, and we can be able to manage that to where we're not going to spend two weeks at, on one site to be able to cut and remove those trees. And then this is an example of a non, you know, a non-native vegetative right-of-way that is in good condition and that we don't have to worry about, that, and then, that we can come and check in on this and not have to do a whole lot. And then here is, um, kind of a fall picture of a native vegetative, um, right-of-way, um, that has that pretty orange-colored grass that, you know, really poses habitat for a lot of things, and, um, especially, I mean, one of our, you know, biggest things that people are, you know, out and about for right now is the ringneck pheasant, and that's just this one piece of area that is a habitat for them in a such heavily agricultural area that they can utilize and is also there for the public to see as they drive by. And this is, uh, one that is, doesn't pose any threat to, uh, a person driving down the road and losing control or anything like that. Um, so now going to equipment that I have to utilize. Um, currently, we have, um, two 100-gallon sprayers, um, that go in the back of a pickup. Um, this, uh, you know, in turn, trying to spray that 1,200 acres of right-of-way in a quarter of the, in the quarter of that county is, it's going to be difficult, but, you know, it's something that, you know, maybe down the future, be able to upgrade to that spray truck. Um, and then we also, for wider right-of-ways, we have, we were, we purchased the gator through the IRVM grants, and this is a very useful tool for being able to get in those hard surface right-of-ways to spray that brush without having to, you know, get out of the truck and spray and, or, or follow that brush head and spray that as well.
You sprays as you go, then you don't, you're not out there in the spray?
Um, so that is all by handgun, and that is, um, you're, you're not in a direct line, it's not a mist, it's a stream, so you're, you're not going to be coated in.
Well, I thought you had, the way you sounded, you had something.
Right, it does have that capability, but we rarely use that. Uh, for our seeding equipment, we have our hydrocedar, which is shown up in the top left, and then, and kind of what I was talking about with the, um, how the hydrocedar leaks, um, this was purchased in 1985, and, you know, it's kind of a, been a problem that we've kind of possessed, and, and we're having to utilize more vehicles, um, and we can't transport this from our shop with water in it, by the time we get to our area, it is empty. Um, there's four bearings there, and it, I mean, every one of them has a leak like that. Um, and, you know, we, we have been utilizing it, but we've had to use, tie up a tandem truck with a water tank in it to be able to fill that up on-site. truck with a water tank in it to be able to fill that up on-site and then spray or applicate the seed and hydromulch to that project. Next, we have Tru-X Drill, which is a very beneficial tool, a smaller drill, and this Bowie Arrow Mulcher, which is basically it chops up the, the straw bales for matting. From there, we have our brush cleaning equipment. We currently have two brush mowers with arm brush mowers that are from 2002 and one from 2012. Our Vermeer Wood Chipper is 19, is, is utilized and it does work, but it is getting older and maintenance on it is, is getting more hard to justify. We also have a Skidsteer brush head that we utilize and is a very useful tool and chainsaws and weed trimmers, you know, have been acquired since, for 20 years. And then kind of the heavy equipment that I left to utilize is Agco Alice Utility Tractor, which they do not make anymore. You can still get parts for them, but also is getting up there in age.
So it would be the same, if, when it comes time to replace, it'd be the similar vehicle, just a-
Yes, probably a smaller to get in and out of those right-of-ways. Sometimes it's pretty tight and with that larger machine, it's kind of not only a safety hazard to the user, but others around. But other than that, that is all I have for you guys. Do you have any questions? And most, all of these can qualify under those IRVM grants and they have like an 80/20 payout on those, you know, where they pay for 80% of it and we pay for 20.
We do the 20?
Yeah.
Really? Okay.
I'd like to see someday where we're not spraying any type of stuff out on the vegetation.
Right. Nope. And that, by getting it to that manageable state, our spray bill will be astronomically lower.
Yep. Thanks for your presentation, Tony.
Really?
Thank you.
Good information.
Yeah, thank you. Are you applying for those grants you talked about?
Currently, I'll be applying for two grants for a pickup truck for, to build a spray truck and also a, what they call a roadside inventory. And then this way, I'll be able to further my management plan off of what they come out with of where the problem areas are, where the good areas are and that type of thing.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Have a resolution on the floor. Who's answer is your name and it's called?
I don't, wait, I don't think we have a motion yet.
I made a motion.
Yeah, glad we did.
Second. Well, I missed it. Sorry, who seconded it?
I made it.
Thank you. Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the resolution, the Blackhawk County collect total of $4,781.85 from Paul White, 71% of the $6,735. That Blackhawk County paid for Iowa Law Enforcement Academy training per the employment agreement between Blackhawk County and Paul White.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, it's 1034. This is a hearing bid opening on the proposed purchase of steel to be used in the construction of Project L-1802 Vice Road Bridge. Motion received and placed on file proof of publication and notice of public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Excuse me, thank you.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Next, the motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received. Any written comments, Grant?
No, sir.
Kathy?
No.
No. Next is bids to be received, opened and, oh, all in favor, aye?
I don't think we-
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Bids to be received, opened and read. Bid deadline, 3:30 Monday, October 31, 2022. Your floor. Proposed for engineer's estimate is $62,045.
Is a bid bond required? A bid bond is now required for this. The first bid comes, is from, sorry, Odin Enterprises, Wahoo, Nebraska. The bid is $62,458.18, 62,458.18. Okay, I'm sorry, there is no bid bond required. The second bid comes from Triad Metals, Columbia City, Indiana, $57,226,38, 57,226,38, 57,226,38. And those are the two bids.
I'll make a motion of the board supervisor review and place on file the bids to allow time to review said bids as recommended by Catherine Nicholas.
Second it.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carried. Thank you, Kathy. See you next week. Let's take a, another eight-minute break before we go into work session, please.
Thank you. With that water tank leaky.
Didn't help, Penny. You did it twice. Yeah, to play it twice.
Thanks, man. I was cheering this.
Hey, that was good, that was good. I appreciated the information, but also what you're doing, but you see those ditches.
Hey, Rory.
You see those ditches that were-
Your expertise will need to be employed as we-
It's like, yeah, I thought too, it was like an appreciation for how much we did need you. I was going to say that to say we haven't done anything.
We're going to need to prepare a narrative at some point.
Yeah, yeah. How do you go about, like you said, then a quarter, like you said, to do kind of like twelve?
I'm going to try, I am, I am getting-
Yeah, how will you, will you just kind of do that in four times or will you? Well, yes, okay.
I didn't realize the one was until just, I bet it's not going to be by the end of this meeting or it's not going to matter by then. But in any event, the-
Okay. All right, north, south, and this way, okay.
That's the, that's the, things are going to sit in the washroom. Try to talk to Ben this afternoon, you couldn't talk yesterday.
Yeah, well, that's what I wondered, do you, not put a point, but do you, this was where, let's start out, is the worst, so let's start here or, or kind of skip around?
We'll update that.
Is it? Okay. Yeah.
ARP committee meeting, but we are keeping things moving.
Right, yeah, things are moving.
Things are moving.
Oh, sure.
And I talked to, yeah.
Yeah, well, like you said, the chance of safety and stuff issues, the more, the more traffic, yeah.
No, it, it, stuff has to go. This, this predicament is because there wasn't enough movement and organizing effort taken in, it had to happen. My problem is every now and then-
Yeah, oh, for sure, yeah.
Those jobs I used to do take over still.
I just thought, you know, you always drive by, you know, and fly by when you're, and then you see the ditches and stuff, but I thought, when you see a couple of those, it's like overgrown forests.
I love my job.
I don't see those often, goodness. Yeah, but they're out there and that is going to be, you're kind of, yeah, can't be just like, sort of, out more than-
I did send yours out, but I put brakes on it.
Well, I appreciate it.
I was going to say, if it's good, go, I have to look at what you got on there.
Kathy's given the report, and I assume some of those items might be in your budget this year then, too, like some things they're granted, so they need to get going. Okay, thanks, I appreciated it, yeah.
I think you're saying, what now, if, if the bid goes over?
Fire suppression.
Your request can go in as that. It can go in higher than that to give yourself a buffer. However, I would request it at that because you're going to have to request approval of whatever contract you enter into regardless.
That's good to see.
And then if you come back over that and you still want to push for it, you're going to, you can request that at that time. Now, if it goes over a million, then that changes our, our classification and the whole process we got to go through. Yeah, I, I'm hoping not, but man.
Is everything you've hoped for?
You guys say so much fun stuff.
You just don't know where things go. It's, it's crazy, crazy, crazy.
More antifreeze here than it is.
Yeah, it is. I don't know what else to say beyond that, but that.
Was the qualified in?
Yes. So on that, there's a, I, I've got to confess, I don't know, but I talked to, I know that Cherie and I, she's in her office right next to me over at Conservation, I will ask her because I know that she has this map, but otherwise she's always a resource on that kind of thing, where you Google around a little bit to see because there is, there is a map somewhere that indicates-
Gas meters?
Yeah, they will. But I, they got some good ones. They found the vehicle. They found the vehicle. But I think they would be like, say, a few blocks that direction, yeah.
Or like, it'd pull, pull up with. I would have saved somebody.
The thing, they weren't smoking. Well, and that brings us to-
It would have been your last cigarette.
A greater area.
Who was the fireman that got hurt, you know?
I don't know. I tried to get ahold of my- I saw Jason Marantz yesterday, I meant to ask him, but I forgot.
Yeah, I seen.
Baker Tilly.
Him going upstairs this morning. He's retiring at the end of the year, right?
Yep, December 30 first. Which probably isn't that concerned, precisely, but it is more largely, it's, it's a sheriff's office concern. And they told me, wait, we're going to look at this under this new, under this other-
Yeah, it still doesn't belong here.
Services. I thought, okay, that's great.
Got you, Al.
Last week, that turned out to be lost revenue. So if that's what-
We had that trunk retreat out at the Amets last night. We had over 400 kids in less than an hour.
Really?
Everybody's going.
Canada Covenant last yesterday.
Oh, my God, yeah. Oh, and be honest, the police needed to be out for safety purposes, oh my God. They had people with the RV or the UTVs or whatever, something they want to call them. And the one guy had a wagon on the back of it. It had like 12 or 14 kids in the back of it. And pulls into our, our lab.
Yep, that's water under the bridge. So it, you know, that's, that's how I-
Yeah, the one guy goes, that's not true, my wife was country there, so I go, I just don't think it's why, she goes, well, that's his decision. The guy next to me said, I don't think that's real smart for you to be having all those kids in the back end. He goes, especially standing up. Oh, they were standing up and then he topped it off. He had a mask on.
Well, we'll get that figured out, so in any event, that's where we're at.
All ready to go.
All right.
Regarding all of the work session for this year, I sent an email just before the board leaves.
Ready to go.
I got that email.
Look at that, everybody stayed.
Yeah.
They just forgot to log out.
They think it's good, there needs to be work session.
Ready, Al?
All right, take care, Nate, thanks.
We're back in session, work session. This is the resolution to approve the fire suppression system for the IT server room to be considered for American Rescue Plan funding.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Where's yours?
And this is, this is simply something that's been, been on the table for a while. It, it's to get the ball rolling and have Baker Tilly evaluate it. We don't have a burden of proof rating at this point on this, so this is just preliminary.
Thank you, Mr. Tryon.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Any comments? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Treoka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a resolution to approve the electronic timekeeping system to be considered for American Rescue Plan funding.
All moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Same thing, except that this is a newer proposed project, but this is just a preliminary approval so that we can get the ball rolling for evaluation.
Thank you again, Mike. Any questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a resolution to approve the relocation of the Elections Department to be considered for ARP funding.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any questions?
And again, this is preliminary. Go, go ahead, Mike. I was just saying, again, this is preliminary at this point. It's to submit it to Baker Tilly for evaluation. Okay, thank you.
Karen probably doesn't want to say anything, she's living it right now. In the hallway.
Yeah, you don't want to make waves.
Thanks.
This is a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, a resolution to earmark transfer a total of $735,000 from excess general funds originating from art money revenue replacement funds to the Washburn Sewer Fund affected June 30, 2022.
All right, and what this is for is, so with regard to the, everybody I think recalls that there are some sewer upgrades for the Washburn Sewer System that were initially authorized by the board to be funded under expense categories in ARPA. I have to, again, go back and look at what the total of that was. I don't believe we spent yet a total of $735,000. However, there is a portion that was spent in fiscal '22 and it was anticipated that that would be funded through an expense category under ARPA. Ultimately, because it was determined that proper procurement procedures were not followed in, in obtaining, you know, or entering into contracts for that, for that project, that that should be funded with excess revenue. Excess revenue is essentially the same as lost revenue. Lost revenue went toward wages and benefits and therefore what was left from that became excess revenue. So what is being proposed is that those funds utilized for the, the Washburn Sewer Project in fiscal '22 in order to clean up the audit on this, that they be, they be funded with excess revenue. Thank you, Mike. Do we know, do we know what the balance is, Mike, of what we have left? And I apologize, I have to get that balance yet, Mr. Little, but I, because I sue, are you talking about the, the total of lost revenue or are you talking about the total utilized on the ARPA, on the, the ARPA portion of the Washburn Sewer? Both, plus the fact that I believe you sent an email out that any future expenditures have to be approved by the board? Correct. So I need to get the, the, I need to get the final total on the portion utilized for the, for the Washburn Sewer. My apologies for not doing that at this point. As for the, as for lost revenue, I would have to take a look at the updated total now that we have added the, I, I know that we've added the compensation study to that. There are still some automobiles over in health that are anticipated to be funded out of that. The reason that amount isn't known precisely is because while certain, certain contracts to purchase have been entered into, they're still waiting on some of those vehicles. And so I will make- And so I will make it a point within the ARP Committee to get an updated total of both those figures for the board within the next week or two for sure.
Yeah, the main one I'm talking about, Mike, is X amount of dollars were allocated supposedly for the sewer upgrades.
Yep.
How, how much of that X amount of dollars is left yet?
All right, just give me a second here.
No, that's fine. You can bring it back.
I can bring it back, all right. I was gonna say, I can rifle through some papers I've got, but otherwise, yeah, I'll get that figure back to you.
Okay.
My, my only question I'm wondering, because it's, it's nice to hold on to the lost revenue 'cause it's the more flexible funding option, and this is a good, a big chunk to take out of it. Is it Baker Tilly's opinion that maybe even some of the expenses that haven't been gone out yet, could those possibly be used under one of the, one of the allowed categories instead of lost revenue, so that we don't have to take the whole, you know, three-quarter million dollar chunk out of kind of our most flexible spending pool for, for the ARPA money?
And so that, that's a good question. And, and the, once we know exactly what the fiscal 22 total is, that's the only chunk that will be taken out of lost revenue or excess revenue at this time, Mr. Schwartz. The, the remainder, the, the ARPA Committee has reevaluated this and is going to be looking at engaging in proper procurement so that the remainder can be, can be paid for under an expense category under ARPA. To answer your question about Baker Tilly, they have evaluated this and assuming proper procurement, it actually has a fairly low burden of proof. They gave it a level two. The problem is, is that as a committee, we determined, in part with really good insight that Roy Givings shared with us, that this could have, you know, the county possesses the ability to, to do a, to prepare an RFP on this project, should have done so, in fact, and as a result of that, it behooves us to do that correctly, to make sure that in the event of future audits, we don't have any concern arise. So we, we want absolutely as much of this as possible to come under the, to come under an expense category, but right now, we wanna make sure up to and including the total that's been expensed on it for fiscal 22, that that is, that is covered under excess revenue.
Mike, I have a question. Does it make sense to bring back to the board, I guess, some of those items that were, well, were categorized, I guess, as lost revenue, but it was really up to the board to decide if it's lost revenue, or we wait till another budget year, or those types of things, or does it make sense to do that soon?
My understanding, and I'd invite the board to correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know that there's been a formal proclamation with regard to this, but my understanding is that anything that hasn't at this point been expensed under lost revenue, absent an additional approval by the board, breaks are to be applied to that right now, and that the board should approve any lost revenue project going forward. I, I've heard differing opinions by board members in individual conversations, whether, you know, lost revenue should be a safety net for in case anything would have to be paid back in the future, or, you know, we wanna, we wanna wait and qualify everything we're proposing under,
Well, maybe.
under an expense category. And so I'm trying to treat it that way right now, but I'm sorry.
No, I was, no, I was just gonna say, maybe I propose this, that we don't necessarily have to take the action, but maybe have the discussion and what cat, what are, you know, the items that are in that, just for the board to be considering or thinking about going forward. And at some point in time, we'll have to take that action.
You bet. And, and, oh, I'm sorry. As a ready reference, the, the spreadsheet that Jen has been on behalf of the ARPA Committee, that does indicate on there, if anything was coded as lost revenue. There's color coding for the expense categories on there. And so I'd, I'd encourage the board to take a look at it. It is updated, I think, fairly regularly, and it's, it's located on the shared drive.
It is. I, I think that where I'm asking for the direction is of the board. It's that you're seeing in various conversations, you've heard different things from different ones of us, of how we see that ten million minus some dollars spent, and, and maybe that discussion of the board of where we would like to see that ten million allocated or not would be helpful. And not for a decision, but just to kind of hear our comments of what we'd like to see done with lost revenue.
And so I think maybe the, if I'm taking direction correctly.
No, just asking.
I think kinda, yeah, I agree.
Asking the board, I guess, really, but yes.
Yeah, I, I think that it would be, it would be nice to have that all come back before the board. I think that might've been what Mr. Little was getting at, in trying to get to where the balance sits. I can say with, with fairly good certainty that the, certainly a majority, I would say more than three-quarters of it has not been allocated at this point, but I, or has not been spent at this point, I mean, but I would have to take a look at it again to know for certain.
Sure. Just something for future thought. If we wanted to have that, like you say, when we talk about even plans for what we see, we wanna do with ARPA, what do we wanna do with that ten million dollars?
So I'm, I'm noting, you know, report back on the projects that were coded under lost revenue, and also get a, get a balance, or at least a very good estimate of balance for lost revenue.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
You bet. All right, so that is, again, that's, I think I've explained the reasoning for the resolution proposed under D, and, and this is something that's been requested by our auditors. That was the only thing I wanted to add on that.
Thank you, Michael.
Thanks.
Any further discussion by any of the board members? Hearing none, this is the resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
I'm pretty sure nobody moved this one yet.
Oh, we did wait, yeah, so moved.
All right.
Okay.
We have to do it. I was gonna say, right? Oh, I said, I'll make the motion.
No, no, I got it now.
Oh, okay.
You too, so, I think.
I thought, if you didn't.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Drelka?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes.
Little?
No.
White?
Yes. Moving on to discussion, possible board acts, and consider all aspects of the American Rescue Plan funding.
Okay.
Guess that's what we were just talking about, wasn't it?
Well, the committee needs direction.
Yep, there's, there's a couple of things here. So before we, we get into the general open session, I know that there is one specific project that we'd like the board to, the board's already approved it in the past. We'd like the board to take it up because it's regarded as emergent, and Rory and Al are here to talk about that one.
Sure. Good morning, Board. Rory Givings, Maintenance Superintendent. I think I've met, well, I know I have met with a few of you one-on-one, and then I've also sent out an email kind of explaining our phone situation here at the county with regards to the infrastructure from our existing service provider. We're being told that that's hit the end of its useful life. And it really puts us in a, a pretty emergency-type situation, given that they're giving us a deadline of December 5th to find other services. And so we are currently working on a few things, as I had indicated. We're working with the Iowa Utility Board, one, to get a small extension on that if possible. And fortunately, on a good note, for the last several months, we've been working already on what's called the SIP phone service with the IT folks, Al and his team. And so we, we already kind of had a leg up on, on that, that service, and so we're ready to, we're ready to go pending approval from the Board of Supervisors to move forward with that. We've got three proposals in hand. We've scored it. We thoroughly went through each one. We feel pretty comfortable, we feel very comfortable, actually, with, with one particular vendor. And so I guess at this point, you know, we really feel like we need to get the ball rolling on this to avoid any potential downtime with our existing service provider.
So what financing are we talking about here, Rory, amusing?
Uh, this would come under ARPA, and it's already been submitted. Mike was able to expedite that through our consultants, and they've reviewed it, and Mike, I can let you talk to that.
Yep, so the, Mr. Little, the, we just heard back from Baker Tilly on this, I think, basically the end of Friday, and they have assigned this a category four on the burden of proof continuum, which is non-enumerated use direct payment. And the reason for that is because they consider it a project which may be funded based upon our identification of a COVID-19 public health or economic impact, and the design of a proportional response that addresses a response to that impact. And specifically, and I, and I think Al can give additional details on this, but the, the general or the gist of it is this, the new phone system not only replaces our existing phone system, but it also enhances employability to work remotely. And because of that, that puts it under an, an ARPA expense category that it may not otherwise fall under if it was simply a replacement of a phone system.
Yeah. What would be the total amount we'd be authorizing today, then, to spend?
And I, I know that when we, when we submitted this, it was estimated at a hundred thousand. What was our, what were our proposals?
So, the, the proposals don't have an actual dollar amount because it's mostly setup fees. So with the new phone system, it's a cloud-based service, so they moved to a subscription base. Total-wise, it's comparable with, with the, the vendor that we, that we are leaning towards. It is comparable to what the county currently pays. So what this project would be for is the initial setup fees and, and/or the cost of the hardware, which would be the phones and headsets and things like that. So, and I think that would be a good use of the funds initially. I understand that the phones that we have currently are about five, six years, years old, but it makes sense to replace them all if we have the funds to do so at this point.
And what.
Okay, I ask again, what are we actually approving? How much today? If we don't know, or do we need to find out, or what?
Um, will we be approving upwards to a hundred thousand dollars, but I don't foresee it reaching to that point.
Okay.
I don't have a full breakdown of the setup fees because the setup fees are, will vary depending on how they assess the.
So a hundred thousand would be the ceiling, then? So it'd be up to not to exceed?
Yeah, it could be, you could say it as nine, ninety-nine or whatever.
Not to exceed a hundred.
Yeah, not to exceed.
Okay.
I don't, oh, go ahead, Tom. I don't see where we have any choice, but it seemed like every other year Rory's come to us at budget time, and it just seems like it was a couple of years ago, we budgeted a pretty good-sized amount of money.
Yeah.
To upgrade our system, and we took it out for bid, and here we are again. So I kind of hope whatever we do this time is, is a good fix.
And I think it will be. Back in 2018, we did upgrade our system to an IP system, which that was the internal system for our facilities. What, again, what we're running into now is actually on the vendors, and it's their infrastructure that's outdated. We've already been talking about SIP for quite some time. There's many different benefits, not only giving us the ability to, to work remotely, but also tying our facilities together under one system, such as secondary roads, conservation, the downtown facilities, but also evacuation, mask notification, just, you know, you could, you literally could have a hot button to initiate something like that. And that's what we're really lacking in some of our facilities, just, just that notification process to get that out there for people to evacuate our buildings. So there is a lot of benefits.
What we upgraded, Rory, eternally, then, we're still able to use that from 2018?
We can, we can use our phones. That is something we are kind of still dabbling with. This particular vendor that, that was scored high did indicate that our existing phone sets could be reused, although it is recommended to change those out. And when you look at this system, you know, the way I kind of looked at it is that the phone systems are just one small piece of the big, the internal workings of the system. Essentially, it's changing, it's internet protocols. So your, your phone system essentially is going over the internet, and it's no longer gonna be going over the copper lines. And, you know, based on our history with, with internet, and we currently have CFU, it's been very rock solid. We've had very, very few downtime with that. And so unlike some of the copper feeds that we've, that we've witnessed, and we, you know, during the deratio, that was real evident. We were down for quite a bit, quite a bit of time there. So we're looking forward to that piece of it. But yeah, there, as far as keeping equipment that was purchased a few years back, the, the ability to keep our existing phones is there, but we may find it makes more sense to upgrade those phones along with this under the ARPA funds.
Yeah, I think I agree with you. Do you recall what we budgeted in 2018? It was quite a bit of.
Uh, it was a substantial amount. I'd, I'd be, I'd be guessing, but I would say we're probably in the neighborhood of about three hundred and fifty thousand.
That's what I thought. So, I don't know, it's a lot of money back then going out the window, but I guess we gotta do something today.
Yeah, one thing that I've, I've learned through Al is technology is always changing and hopefully getting better.
Alan, we're fortunate to have categories that this works for in ARPA, quite honestly. And just a lost revenue or something, but yeah.
Motion to move forward on this?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second that not to exceed one hundred thousand.
A motion and a second on the floor. This is a resolution. Please answer. Your name is called.
Drelka?
Yes.
Leland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, Mike?
All right, so now, hand the floor back to the board. It's, the, at this point, we're having a classic work session, I think, to discuss what ideas the board has as the use of our remaining ARPA funds. We're not at a point where even, I don't think even close to half of the funds, well, maybe close to half of the funds with conservation projects, depending on where they go up to, have been at least tentatively spoken for. There's quite a bit of funding that remains under ARPA to be, to be spent. And one of the things the committee's requested informally, at the very least, and to an extent formally, is we, we wanna see what, and we think every department of the county needs to see, where does the board wanna go with this funding? The, the broad categories that we're seeing include the categories that we, we've been using in response to public health, emergency, certain water quality issues. That includes sewer and, and water handling. And of course, there can be aid to disproportionately affected populations. So that's the very generalized setup that we're dealing with here. But what, what we haven't heard yet is where does the board wanna see this money being spent? And so?
I'll, I'll just start off discussion. For me, it's, it's, it's simple in a bit of a holding pattern right now, because I don't wanna.
Or, or both of which, maybe. So that is, I believe that that is in the works. I, I know that Caitlin is very, very busy right now, but I, I know that that is in the works, and she's, was gonna start with looking again at the, at the space enhancement study as kind of her starting point there.
I got a question, Mike, and then I have my priorities too, but has the jail addition been removed from the list?
So far as I know, that was never approved.
Yeah.
It is on the, it is on the spreadsheet merely because it was proposed. That's all that, that had to happen for it to be added to the spreadsheet. In fact, that's all that has to happen now for it to be added to the spreadsheet. And perhaps we need to start taking off items that clearly aren't going anywhere, because I've never heard board support, or I, I don't think the sheriff's office is pushing for it anymore.
No, I mean, that's two hundred, two-point-five million. That is tied up on the spreadsheet, so it might as well be removed unless anybody has any objections. And my priorities are capital, capital, capital project for public health. As long, I'm concerned about additional programs and personnel, but I do support a capital project. project for public health. Conservation, looks like we're going in the right direction for the elections department. I thought that should be a priority. I also support programs to reduce recidivism in the jail and wastewater treatment initiatives or programs for the small towns. So those are my priorities. I thought this would be a good opportunity for the board just to throw out their priorities and, and it's nice to hear from the others so far. I heard from Chris, I'd like to hear from Tom, Linda and Craig, because I feel that's going to give the committee some direction anyway.
Tom or Linda?
Ideally, I'd like to have one project, all the money, vote on it, move on with county business, be done with it, but that's not a reality. I said from the beginning, and some other board members said it too, and they can speak for their stuff, self if they still believe it, I won't support any project that will curtail increase down the road of taxes. The whole idea of this money was to give us some relief in some areas, capital improvements and so forth, but if you're going to pay X amount of money and then turn around and have to increase the taxes in the budget to make it go for the next five, 10, 20, 30 years, that defeats the purpose. So that'll always be in the back of my mind. As far as the cities, my job is to concentrate on the county departments. We have plenty, plenty of projects in our county departments and requests that we need to address before we even think about offering any money to another taxing body. And so therefore, I wouldn't be in favor of that one there. I do think that we're spending a lot of small projects, and I think we need to kind of step it up a little bit. As far as the health department, I honestly, my personal opinion, I don't think they know what they want. First, I heard a clinic at a million dollars, last time I heard it was two and a half million. I don't know if they want a standalone building, or if they want to remodel the pine crests. So I think they're a long ways off of deciding on what they want to do over there, but I'm not saying I wouldn't support it again as long as it didn't increase our taxes down the road.
And I will comment on that briefly. I know there's some different considerations being mulled over at health. I, I can't help but wonder if things might change when we, when we have a new director on board over there.
That's what, yeah, that's what worries me, putting something in place that a new director wouldn't be ready for, or.
Yeah, my, my concern in urging Caitlin to at least throw that out there to get the ball rolling is, I, I know that's a priority of at least a couple of people on this board. And I also know that there's, it's at least broadly a priority of health. And I thought, gosh, it, it takes time to even figure out how this would, would eventually materialize and what they think of the qualification chances for it. And I'm worried about timing at this point. So that is why I, I figured there was no harm in saying, try and get a, try and get a proposal together and let's get the ball rolling, because that's a long way from approving it.
Oh, a long way.
Tom, you got anything else?
No, I, the Washburn sewer, you know, I was against that at first. James convinced me up till the ARPA funding for the improvements. The only money that was spent out there was their usage. Nothing came from the tax dollars. I guess I kind of was bucking at first, saying that it shouldn't be spent out there, but I guess that's what it's used for. Hopefully it'll bring it up to date where they can, if we have an adjustment out there on their rates, it's not too high. But up until now, all money spent for improvements, Ben's services, pumps and everything comes out of usage fees. We spent no tax dollars out there.
And, and to add a little more gloss on this Washburn sewer situation, I've talked to Ben at great length about it. I actually really respect what he's proposed doing out there. Took me a while to wrap my own mind around it, but because the system's been in place for, I believe, a little over 20 years out there, they're starting to see some problems with control panels that are in place, and particularly some of them that he refers to as problem children. I think some of it has to do with how much sun exposure they have and things like that. But the idea would be to get something that would, that would make this a much lower problem area for the next couple of decades, number one. Number two, it would also have features that would help better identify problems that were being caused by, say, when somebody routes their sump pump into their home sewer, which we've heard about with City of Waterloo and other things, that can be a major issue there. And so it, it makes a lot of sense what he's talking about. The problem is, and it all goes back to some faulty guidance that the county had received through, through a couple of different organizations, and that is that the original mindset was that there didn't need to be competitive procurement. When we dug into that further, certainly we realized that we do have to engage in competitive procurement. There isn't, there then was the exploration of whether this would be a single source situation, because Ben might be, you know, the only one who's really best fit for that project for a lot of reasons. What we did realize is that, number one, the, the pumps would be a single source procurement item, or I'm sorry, the control panels. But having said that, the, there can be an RFP as to who's the one installing those control panels. And because of that, in order to properly procure it so that we can put this under an expense category, like Mr. Schwartz had mentioned earlier, and I think, Tom, you were getting at it as well, is we want to, we want to go ahead and, for lack of a better term, fix it and, and procure this the right way for any remaining purchases that need to be made so that we can use ARPA funding to its fullest potential.
Yeah, Mike, actually, for the record, we've done in-house inspections, I believe, twice over the years for illegal hookups, 100%.
All right, so that is, that's the Washburn situation, but I'm sorry.
No, that's good, Mike.
More ideas.
Yeah. Thank you.
Linda?
I would like to see, I, I think the board, as well as the staff, probably put the brakes on when we were going to go through the Baker Tilly projects and see where we were at and how those were going to go and how those were received and if we were going forward. So I would like to see us kind of exhaust our efforts on county projects that we could bring, you know, to the table that are addressed in those four categories or the three. I know conservation's probably, like we said, large projects and some things in mind that would certainly benefit the, the residents here, much like some of the things they're doing, but those types of things. And I just think maybe we've, like I said, just kind of pulled back and haven't thought about what projects are out there. Maybe we have, but I'd like to make sure that we're looking at that. I certainly want to take a look at the health clinic, and that's something that I, I hope we can go forward at least to see where we're at and if we want to do something with that. Elections, I think, was great. I supported that. I thought the treasurer's office was another one that was really one that had a lot of issues and concerns during COVID and people, you know, going outside and waiting and, and that type of thing. And I think Rita at one time was proposing some different changes and remodeling in her office, but I think, and even some of that was to address people with disabilities and things like that, that we weren't able to have those people serviced like we probably should, so ADA types of issues. So I'd like to see that taken a look at, if that was something we could do. I say trails and parks. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that really comes to mind, but it was just making sure, I guess, if there's projects out there that we're considering them first and foremost. Before we looked at nonprofits and other communities or anything like that, I guess I want to make sure that the dollars are used for the county first and foremost. And knowing like water quality, I know we talked about watershed, somebody brought up before. I don't know, that depends on the project and where it falls in this, much like Chris said. You need to see where your dollars are at and what we need, I know, but right now it sounds like we have a large amount of, of funding to still be considering, but.
I know that.
Mental health was another one, but I'm not sure how. I mean, that was just a tough subject. We talked about mental health and what, you know, what that would look like, or I'm not sure yet, but something like that. And that's health related, obviously, but.
I agree with what Dan said about some of the programs over at the jail too, with taking care of some of the brain health issues. In, in retrospect, you know, we could probably save a lot of money by doing that. And my other two ideas are, or a couple, several of the things that we were going to do in here, looking at the offices, how we could better utilize the space and by moving engineers or, yeah, county engineer out to the building, adding on to the building and adding in all under one roof, and Rory out to by Pine Crest. And then there was one other one we were talking about moving. We had elections, we had them. I think, well, yeah, IT, because it, that, that's already in the works where the whole end of the building, so they'd be taking some of Sandy's area too, right?
I, I think there was a discussion of originally, and correct me if I'm wrong by your recollection, but my recollection is that elections would move across the way. The auditor's office would move downstairs into where the treasurer's office is now. Treasurer's office would move across to where the first floor clerk's office is. First floor clerk would move up to the old law library on third floor. Engineer would move out to, I believe, Longfellow.
Got it.
I.
That was in the space study, but that wasn't.
Yep, these were all the, yeah, these, none of this has gone to Baker Tilly, except we will be sending the elections proposal over. And then the, the county attorney's office would come upstairs, and I believe HR was in the potential mix for where IT currently is located. So if that, that's my memory.
That was more than a two-year plan. We were kind of looking at what has to be completed.
Well, it is, and I think there's a lot of question about how much that relates to the pandemic. The elections office, one, there's, at least in my personal opinion, there's a lot of, there's a very strong pandemic-related argument there, and I want to hear what Baker Tilly has to say about that because of the crowding that was experienced there. And as to the treasurer's office, Linda, you mentioned this earlier, Rita did reach out to me and mentioned that, you know, she kind of put, and I think Sandy may have said the same thing, but I might be wrong on that, that they kind of put everything on hold pending what we were going to do with the space enhancement study and proposals. So it's, if, if the idea is that we try and explore things under that, I wonder if it isn't best like we're doing with elections to take at least bits and pieces of that and say, here's what we propose, what do you think? Here's what we propose, what do you think? It may come back differently depending on the peculiar individual proposal.
Sure, because it needs to be COVID-related or pandemic-related, not just because it's a convenient, yeah.
Well, and if what they see is a, a capital expenditure that improves our, our facilities, according to what we've discussed with Baker Tilly so far, they're very, very suspicious about that. They say that that's going to receive the highest scrutiny.
I just meant from the arguments that we can make for that, pandemic-related, not, not just because it's a.
Yeah, they need to be in here on a day when, when we have all the people in here for elections, that'll take care of that. Or even the people that are in these offices, some of them are starting to get cramped. And after we've learned things from COVID, how we need to spread out a little bit, that's just an idea, giving everybody a little bit more space and, and taking care of some other things, really, you know, get people out of the basement, I wouldn't want to be down there either. Go ahead, Grant, sorry.
Well, from the standpoint of the proposal for the election office and how it relates to other offices that were discussed in the space study, and we've discussed this a little bit in the, our committee, I think that we have to, you know, understand that if we move the election office, that's going to have somewhat of a domino effect. We don't know how far that will extend. It depends on, you know, how much you can do in a, you know, just limiting it to the elections and JCS. You know, if you could just do a one-for-one switch, that would be ideal, but it's doubtful that JCS is a good fit for second floor of the courthouse. So once you determine what else you have to move in order to accommodate the elections, which is, you know, clearly covered under, you know, legitimate ARP category, then you have to determine how many of these other moves can be covered similarly. And if you can't make a good justification for that, then you have to decide how important is it for us to make these other moves? Are we willing to pay for those under other sources, whether it's, you know, the available ARP funds formerly known as lost revenue or, you know, other sources? Because some of these things you would probably do eventually anyway. You would, you would spend other county resources. And so, you know, I think, I, I'm very pleased, excuse me, very pleased that the board is so supportive of moving the elections office, but it is going to be part of a larger thing that needs to be considered as a whole.
Right. Well said.
Well, and also in regard to these ARPA funds, I mean, we need to address the issue of Dr. Bickley's vehicle.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, when initially we thought, yes, we can get it, then we decided, we thought, well, gosh, we can't, but I think we're back to a point. I mean, this vehicle's going to be used to haul dead bodies. We're supposed to also prepare for the next pandemic.
All right, so two things in response, that if I'm not cutting you off.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I, I don't think, at least not if we're relying on Dr. Bickley's explanation, I don't think that it's going to be qualified under an expense category for ARPA. And the reason for that is this, Dr. Bickley has been crystal clear in making the point that the number of bodies being transported to Ankeny for autopsy was not affected by the pandemic. And when you mentioned future pandemics, we have been receiving word from two auditing agencies, one being Baker Tilly and the other being, being CLA and some informal conversations that we had, that the, it has to relate to the current pandemic. You can't utilize future pandemics as your justification for it.
Okay.
So in any event, that's where the, the Bickley vehicle, it could be qualified under, under, we'll call it excess revenue, trying to get my terms right here. It could be quali, it could be made a part of the fiscal 24 budget.
Yeah.
It could be handled with some other funding or, or if you wanted to do some kind of budget amendment or something like that. But what I, he was of the, of the understanding that this was basically all a done deal, all we had to do was find the vehicle and pay for it. And unfortunately, that wasn't the case. And when I was having these conversations with him, I, I did discuss with him a questionnaire that had been drafted on the issue, and he said, and, and the idea with whoever drafted that questionnaire was that, well, we, we need it because there'd be increased deaths because of the pandemic. And Dr. Bickley said he didn't send any of those to autopsy. So that, that wasn't part of the justification for the vehicle.
And we had initially proposed 25,000. I mean, what's interesting is looking back, that's nowhere near enough.
Nope.
Maybe we could get a UGOL.
And in addition, he had equipment, additionally, he found out he had equipment that he needed like to help lifting, and that was like another 25,000 to be inside the vehicle. So, yeah, so we're talking probably about 100,000 dollars.
It's considerably more than 25.
Whether it's budget or lost revenue or wherever we look later, but yes, that's.
That's, that's one that we can, like, I think Dan said, get it off the table.
It'd be nice to get it on the agenda in the future so we can bear it out and figure it out.
And I, I did mention to Dr. Bickley on the phone, I said, I think what the, what the board's going to need to see is they're going to have to see an analysis that says, well, this is what we should be expecting to pay if we are continuing to pay funeral directors based upon the charges we're seeing now and what we expect them to be in the future versus this is what this vehicle's going to cost us, this is what all its upgrades are going to cost us, this is what all its maintenance is going to cost us, and so on. It's probably insurance, there might be an insurance issue, there's probably licensing and.
One issue has been the transporting the body down to Ankeny is not given a priority by anybody we're using right now. So if we'd have a homicide and the body wasn't getting down there for. Transporting the body down to Ankeny is not given a priority by anybody we're using right now, so like we'd have a homicide and the body wasn't getting down there for. Four, five, six days. That becomes an issue in prosecution.
Spoliation of evidence.
We can get the numbers, I think, at least from Michelle, but then you could provide those to us. That that would be helpful of what is it a savings or not? So that'd be great. Sorry. What number one or two or twenty assignment? Before when we discuss it though.
It's funny because I had told Dr. Bickley too that I would like to see a comparison of the costs of what.
I think he was relying on finance director for that.
Well, probably, but I.
But we have some of the emails and things on that.
Yeah, I need to get those.
I think another cost Bickley mentioned, not only the vehicle, the maintenance and so forth, but also two persons. Pay for driving up there and back.
Well, and he I think that might be why this new equipment. I know that Waterloo just purchased some pretty pricey lifts that would help one person. Be able to handle loading and unloading, so it might be only one person driving instead of two.
I think he had the people. He said he had the people.
I I talked to Jason Hernandez yesterday. One person should be able to do it.
If you have a lift.
If you, yeah, pretty expensive what he's proposing, but.
But yes, and it was Johnson County, I think, I remember who said it was a big cost savings for them, I think, that led to some of the discussion early on.
Justin, Dan, Justin does autopsies too, don't he?
No, they have all done by pathologist down in the state pathologist in Ankeny.
I'm the one that goes out on the site if we have.
He's an examiner. He does the initial.
He tells you if they're dead.
So the things we don't that we're not aware of if we're not involved, that's interesting.
So the ideas that I've seen thrown out so far, you know, they're pretty far reaching. With with regard to, so I just want to kind of mention some of my understandings from these. I I think a public health clinic speaks for itself. Like someone mentioned, the real question is, well, what are we doing? Are we doing a remodel of a portion of Pinecrest? Are we purchasing an existing building? Are we trying to build a new building? And I know there are considerations there that may, you know, the preference of the health department. May depend on who's the director. Because I know, for example, that there's a concern now that if you if you. Moved it to a standalone, but you didn't move the entire department, you'd have you'd have duplication of services and that wouldn't be efficient. And I think that also gets to Mr. Little's concern about increasing the overall expenditures into the future as a result of things. So that's one thing that we'll have to see what comes out of them on that, but I'm gonna continue to encourage them to get us a proposal on that.
I'd like to, excuse me for interrupting, and I've asked for it before for when Nafisa was still here, her to work with the clinic. And see and what we really, what are what are we missing in Black Hawk County? What do we still need? In case of an emergency or a pandemic or stuff that's not in place or wasn't in place before that we got rid of it. And it's gonna go back in place now because, you know, that's a completely different department with when she took over. Then from what it was when I just seen one of the former people recently and they said they couldn't believe how far down. She carved it down, you know, with stuff that was available for to be done out there. If to ask any anyone else, Linda, my, you sit on the board for health, don't you? She'd know more than me or Dan would know of what what goes on or what services they got. I have no idea what services other than I've been out there and seen some of this stuff.
I can tell you myself that from being there. About four years that the you don't hear a lot about the clinic. You know, they do STD testing. You know, they have dental initiatives in schools. You know that they provide services to low income people. But and and that's more generalized clinic services, I think. But it's but as far as how that breaks down in terms of percentages, I'm not sure that I've heard that discussed if it if I have. It wasn't something that was burned into my memory.
You know, I heard that they got rid of all the dental services.
They contract out for those. Yeah, they contract out for those.
And I don't think any of us know probably whether we get five people a day or five people a week or what that clinic, what that means.
And I think there's. I think there's a legitimate question as to what the numbers are. And so I think that matters and maybe I'll mention that if.
I mean, just as you build a case for it and what you need, what the needs are, if it's.
In addition to the numbers people using, but we also have to look at. We've we've all known and we've all been told every year that I've been on the board. That the STI rates for Black Hawk County are way higher than the state averages. So we know that whatever services we're offering right now, we're not reaching everybody that we need to. And so that's that needs to be part of our thinking as well.
Yes, I didn't mean just to limit it, but to look at what we expect from that facility, I guess.
Chris, how do you think how would we change it to, you know, reach more people?
You know, I think part of the problem with the clinic right now is is its location. It's not. It's not a very private thing. And so with the nature of STIs, there's a lot of, you know, people have a lot of shame. They shouldn't. But there's a lot of shame associated with it, so you need a location that offers more privacy and is is more centrally located. In in my belief. And so I think that's where we're failing, meeting a lot of people.
I know for what it's worth, I talked with Nafisa about this on, I think, one occasion. And, you know, I mentioned to her, I said, well, geez, you know, it seems like a lot of the the population you serve would be out on. You know, you call it that into town or whatever, where kind of where Pinecrest is, but. She made the point to me that Pinecrest is is on the edge and she was looking at something that would be more of a downtown location. So I think that kind of gets partly to Chris's point about having a central location. I think she considered that to be more of the type of location they were looking for. Now, of course, that would have to be balanced. With what, you know, the concern about duplication of services, whether you're moving the whole department, all that stuff, and then what does the county do with Pinecrest?
Yep, that too. Well, even essentially, I I assume like a UNI population would be someone that would use the clinic as well if it was. A little more conveniently located, but I don't know that.
They're the food bank.
I don't know.
Yeah, food bank, yeah.
But if I heard Craig correctly earlier, and I want to make sure I understand this. Craig, you mentioned that, you know, you you were looking for them to kind of figure out what. What the health needs are relative to the existing clinic, but also did I hear correctly that you were thinking of other providers of care as well? Or just are you just looking specifically as to our clinic?
The low income, that would help the low income people mainly.
Weren't you kind of thinking though of the the others that they partner with, like the clinic?
Yeah, because there's a lot of things that are done outside of that area too, you know, for just like. The brain health stuff, there's many, many places in town that you can get those services, but every one of them is needed.
Because when we, I think the discussion came up once when People's Clinic was expanding or doing a new building and it was like, is that something we could. Was worth the conversation to partner with or is there some way we could work together and prove it, be part of it?
I've called over several times to talk to somebody and you never get the call back. Oh, this is the only problem.
You called over to Peoples or called over to Health? All right, so the other. The other things I've heard is we're gonna take, we're just gonna get the jail addition off the spreadsheet because that's that's. A non starter at this point.
Are there some others on there we should be looking at to do that as well?
There there probably are. For example, now there there's still, there's still a desire to do a lot of those projects. They just probably aren't ARP projects, to throw out an example, repaving the courthouse parking lot.
Oh, yes.
Things that were on the initial list, but since we've changed our.
Mike, you sent out those emails to all the departments that had anything on the list, right?
That's correct.
And you've gotten responses back from a large number of them, but not.
Not a large number of them. I've got a good response from IT and I've gotten some kind of piecemeal responses from a couple others. I talked to Caitlin about hers because she said she's working on one and she is working on it. Talked to her about that this morning. I know that elections was just the elections office and that is now obviously moving forward for further evaluation. And we've we've pared down a lot of the maintenance ones. Rory met with the ARP committee last week. And we talked about all of those as to what we're still looking to do and what we're not. So there will be some further updating on that. So we are, we are getting there. And the the biggest stuff in terms of the length of lists has been responded to, but I've really only received a detailed response from. Al and then a a partial, or we've we've received an in-person response, I should say, not partial, but. But detailed in-person response from Rory. And so anyway, moving moving down the list.
I have a question for the group too. Early on, we talked about a mobile unit for health. And that seemed to be, I thought, had some traction because we talked about it going into the communities in the county.
I think that would take a person or.
Staffing kind of thing. I don't know. I just thought if that was gone.
The new director should.
Yeah, I'd leave that up to the new director.
I think we'll, well, obviously, it's up to the board who to leave it up to, but yeah. The I haven't heard much on that. When I had that one conversation with Nafisa. She did mention that if the proposal was to keep the clinic at Pinecrest. And just say move it to first floor, she would then want the mobile clinic. And I I kind of, I believe my remark back to her, and I haven't committed this to memory, was, well, I don't think anybody. Understood you to have taken that off the table necessarily, but we just haven't heard much about it. And so I think that's that's probably the fairest way to put it is that if there's a pitch to be made again on that. It should probably may be made in combination with any other clinic plans. And maybe it could be an alternative too.
The size that they make, the like Winnebago deal, you you check that out. You're gonna be spending almost a million dollars and you're gonna have much room inside of that thing.
And I know that Nafisa had ballparked it, or I shouldn't say I know, but I believe she had ballparked it at three hundred thousand, which sounded like.
Way low.
That's without an engine, older.
Yeah, medical facility, it'd be like a little higher probably, yeah.
I thought we were just gonna get a school bus with a rusty old hospital bed in it. That's three hundred thousand, Chris.
There'll be snow delays on cold days, right?
That's alternate B or C.
So I'm also hearing some broad, at least somewhat broad, support for conservation projects. And I think that there was already approval by the board of the of at least a couple of different phases. Of the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. They are moving forward with the getting the justification. So that they can try to, you know, use that to push final approval of the second phase. There was already final approval of the first phase, at least that's my understanding in part because that was the phase on which we had to commit the funding in order to get the. Destination Iowa grant. So the the, you know, conservation is moving forward. We had a nice meeting with Baker Tilly, at least I thought it was a nice meeting on on Friday last week and they. They really, one of the things that stuck out to me, there's been, there's been a bit of a of a tension between. You know, Baker Tilly says, well, we don't think this justification that the state of Michigan uses applies, whereas. You know, conservation says, well, yes, it does, and I can see both sides of it. The neat thing is this. As long as we've got our ducks in a row, we should have enough to pass the initial independent audit that CLA. Does each year for the county or whoever our independent auditor happens to be at that time. And so that's the good thing. Now, the question is, well, how would we hand, how would it go if a, you know, the treasury sent. You know, audited the projects that we did and what if they pick on, say, the Cedar Valley Nature Trail? And they don't think that the recommended justification or the recommended expense category is the most applicable. Well, because a written justification is required for projects that are a million dollars or more. The all of these potential expense categories can be argued in those written justifications. Even though we only report one to the treasury on our quarterly reporting, at least that's how I understand it works. I don't do the quarterly reporting. But the even though we only officially, you know, latch on to one as our primary expense category. The nice thing is is that we can put in that written justification multiple categories. And in the case of of the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, it can be, it can be both of those categories that we've seen. I think one was two point two and one was three point five. I'm having that effect, I think. So the so I'm hearing some broad-based support for conservation. I'm not pinning anybody down here as to a vote, but I'm. I'm gonna be.
Mike, could you help me remember, did the conservation get that state grant yet or is that just in the process?
They were awarded that grant.
Which was how much?
I want to say it was. Well, one point something million dollars, I think, but it but I have to double check.
Meeting today, but I just want to re, I still remain very supportive of all the conservation projects.
Okay, good. Did you say you haven't, what did you say at the start of your?
I said I didn't mention in the meeting today, but I just wanted to reiterate, I'm still very supportive.
Okay, and so, yeah, I I'm I'm hearing fairly broad-based support for conservation and. I hate to say this as a positive of their proposals, but they do, they do potentially nab a large share of the money. And I think I heard Mr. Little say earlier that his preference would be spend it all in one spot. So there's, you know, while while any capital projects would be subject to stricter scrutiny. As we've heard from Baker Tilly over and over, this Cedar Valley Nature Trail in all likelihood will be a level eight. When the just, when the final evaluation comes out. At the same time, having said that, they would gobble up potentially large shares.
The needs of so many people and you think from a broad base of people that can utilize those trails and parks. There aren't many things that hit that kind of a population.
Well, and the fact that we provide it for free, it it undeniably, at least in my view, it undeniably helps. People who are in disproportionately affected communities, people who are in qualified census tracts. I'm trying to use all the right lingo here, but it I I do believe that an argument is made is is. Or can be made and it's going to be made. And I know it's going to be made because Sharia has repeated it to me in conversation multiple times. That even if you're not in that census tract, you can show how you help the people who are. You know, City of Waterloo might encounter that more if they were, you know, within their boundaries. But most of our stuff's rural when we're talking about parks and a lot of what we do is, so anyway.
Did we give you the direction you need, I guess, with our broad base? That's kind of what I'm wondering.
And that's where I'm, I think you have, because I I'm gonna, I'm gonna chew on this a little bit. But I but I think that I I go back to conservation and say, what, what is your ask? You know, let us know what you want to do ultimately with this if, you know, if you've got ideas. Because I want to hear proposals and now I I think there's broad-based support for conservation proposals, so I'm gonna be asking for those proposals.
Do we have broad base, I'd say, for health and to kind of.
For a clinic, I heard broad base.
Or mental health or in those kinds of, I guess I want to hear what those are.
I'm getting to those. Or I'm getting to the other stuff. I the clinic itself as a as a brick and mortar place. We've talked about that and I want to hear what the health proposal is on that. So I I've gotten guidance, I believe, and if. Anybody disagrees with me, just say so. Because I'm not, I'm not talking because I'm necessarily right about all of this. I want to make sure that I that I'm hearing the board correctly. Dan mentioned earlier a program to reduce recidivism in jail. Linda, you had, I believe. Why is his name? Tom Ikas. Tom Ikas was here about a program he had.
Transitional housing. To keep the people with mental illness issues or brain issues out of jail.
And what I don't know right offhand is how that necess. And what I don't know right offhand is how that necessarily, I've got to see how that fits into the public health aspect of the, or end or public safety aspect related to the pandemic. The nice thing is, is if it reduces recidivism, the, I think the idea would be that you'd keep jail populations down a little bit, or you wouldn't at least have as much overcrowding as we see it sometimes, I believe, in our county jail. So I think that's probably where that sits. But what's everybody, I think, Craig, I think you said you support that. Does, Linda, you brought, did you invite Tom in? I shouldn't say broad.
Well, they kept asking to come. Yeah, don't say broad. I was going to say, they kept asking, because they were.
I'm not a big fan of that.
You're not?
But you mean programs that would do that, yeah.
Not at all.
See, and that's what I was going to say, Dan. There may be specific programs, I'm thinking of, when you talk about reducing it, or just in general, people coming with ideas, or what are your thoughts, Dan?
Well, I've been talking with the jail administrator about it, because I think they should bring us some proposals that we can vet.
Oh, sure.
So I will talk to them some more, because they are running some programs.
Okay.
Their concern is when the funding ends, the program ends.
Well, and my position is, well, if the money ends, the program ends. At least we gave it a shot.
Yeah.
Well, and it might help tell us if it works.
Right.
Yeah.
Wasn't there some programs in place too, that they got rid of that would have been worth, worthwhile to save?
I believe so, yeah.
And ARPA qualifies maybe?
Over the period of time.
Okay.
Right.
I would say, I definitely want to see those proposals on reducing recidivism as well. And I'm, I'm open to the transitional housing. But I also feel like so oftentimes the conversation around mental health in the county, I want to see us talk about mental health for the entire community, not just, not just our jail population. And folks are in and out of there. And, you know, I'd like to explore whether there, because quite frankly, we don't have, there are not enough therapists in the community. There are openings all over the place for hiring. So if there is anything that we can do as a county to help attract and retain therapists to live and practice here in Black Hawk County, whether that's using a chunk of this money for, you know, property tax incentives or whatever it could be, that would incentivize mental health practitioners to live and practice here in Black Hawk County. Because I think that is our greatest problem, is that there just aren't, there aren't enough practitioners here.
The needs, yeah.
I don't think there's enough across the United States. Is there, Chris?
No, no, there aren't. And so we're competing with a deficit everywhere. So that's why I think we need to be creative about how we do that. We've certainly got people, people graduating into the field from right here in our own community, but they're not staying here to practice.
So what I would ask the board to do on this is, I want, and I think I speak for the ARPA committee when I say this, but I'll invite Chris and Grant to beat me over the head if I'm not, and Michelle. I think we want to hear, what, what organizations do you have in mind? What specific, because there's not a, there's not a lot of clarity as to how we do this right now, what we go with. And the kind of thing that comes to my mind when you say, well, we don't have, we've got a deficit of mental health professionals here in the Cedar Valley, yet we graduate them here. The idea that comes to my mind is, is there a program that encourages investment in this area, or maybe in the state or something at UNI that's there that we could help? Or is there a, you know, maybe there's something with community colleges. Maybe it has to do with, with professionals who are not, who work for therapists, who aren't the, who aren't technically doctors themselves. Maybe they're counselors, or maybe they're, you know, something else.
The VA has a program where some guys go through and become, you know, more or less like a, some type of counselor for you.
Yeah, to some extent, people, people can be each other's counselors. I know that. But I'm no expert in this area. I've been really blessed in that I haven't had to visit with a counselor that many times in my life. And so I can't, I can't speak from experience, but I want to, I want to hear, you know, what are the organizations? What do you want? Is somebody going to fill out a questionnaire so that we can, so that we can send it to Baker Tilly and say, we want to give a million dollars to organization X to help mental health in Black Hawk County? Does this qualify? That's the kind of direction that I'm looking for. Am I on the right track?
999,000.
Yeah, just under a million. Well, we're talking about capital projects there, but yeah.
Actually, probably some others too.
It's helpful to, to hear, you know, the board's interest in that area, because then not only can we start focusing on individual organizations, but I think that we can look more to what other counties have done across the country, because some have been focusing more in this type of an area. And they might be able to give us some clues on, you know, ways to do it, rather than just sending something out in the newspaper and say, everybody come in and ask for money.
You're bad. We have time for research, right?
Um, I, my, every time I'm asked, do we have time, my answer from now on is going to be maybe, until it turns to no. So that's kind of where I'm at.
No, I just meant that requires us somebody to look into it more, whether it's us or you, or, yeah.
I'm a paranoid sort. I don't, we're all spread a little bit more thinly because of ARPA. And it, but this is, this is, like Grant said, this gives us ideas as to how we can dig in. But I'd, I'd like to see the board dig in and make some proposals as well as to specific organizations. I know people, you know, everybody's got different life experiences, different people they run with. Any one of those can be a resource. Now, municipal wastewater, I think, did I hear that, Dan, from your end? Is that, is that something the board is really interested in? I heard from Tom and Linda that we want to focus on county projects.
Well, first, I'd put their priority.
I, I have several concerns. I think I've voiced those before about going down this road. And those concerns can be summed up as follows. Number one, those projects, to my understanding, were already let. And so we're subject, you know, we're stuck with the fact that they may not have followed procurement rules. Number two, we would have to do, at least if they're under expense category, we would have to do subrecipient monitoring. And number three, in that same vein as number two, you know, we're somewhat beholden to the fact that we need to trust these municipalities to do things correctly. Now, they'd probably be able to hire people to help ensure that. But I have, I do have those concerns from a liability standpoint in terms of our auditing. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, and I thought too, because they were started, these weren't like as a result of ARPA. These were projects that all had been let and started and in different stages of progress that made it difficult for us. And I'll say, oh, now we'd like to make the argument that.
Yep. That's a very good point as well.
That was what Baker Tilly even thought, yeah.
Yeah, that's a very good point as well. And so I have my concerns. I'm not trying to, to knock anybody's motives in, in supporting these. I think they have very real problems in these communities. But the, but the reality is that as a county, or as an ARPA committee member anyway, I want to hear the board say, yes, we want to go down this road. I want to hear broad-based support for that from the board, which means I want to hear it from three saying, yeah, I like this idea, before we push it to get some, get this reduced to some kind of a questionnaire.
Since five of us haven't been on for a while.
Oh, Tom dropped off.
I didn't notice that.
I didn't notice that.
Yeah.
Well, in any event.
You lost his connection. You want three, though, right? So, okay.
Maybe, he may be, maybe he'll get back on, I don't know. But the, but then.
Hold your breath.
Moving right along. We've talked about conservation.
Yeah.
We've talked about focusing on county projects. We've mentioned, we've talked about elections, we've talked about now the treasurer's office. So I think that goes hand in hand a little bit with what Grant said too, about the fact that once we make one move, we're kind of potentially setting in motion.
Yeah, but we're not moving the treasurer's office. She was just talking about doing the changes she needed to her office, I thought.
I thought she needed a little bit more space across the hollow, didn't she?
Oh.
I thought she did.
The space that she said that.
I couldn't be wrong.
Oh, I don't know.
So Rita had kind of, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but my recollection is that she said that she had kind of put a hold on everything because of the fact that she wanted to see where the space enhancement stuff went. And right now, we're kind of stuck in neutral on that, is the way I see it. We're sort of pushing on it a little bit with this elections office. That might be the first domino to fall. But if indeed that includes something from the treasurer's office ultimately, I think an argument can be made that their portion of it might be designed to reduce crowding, or at least reduce exposures to those people working in that office. How that's going to play out, I'm not sure. Part of it's going to depend on cost. It's going to rate pretty high on the burden of proof continuum, I can say that much almost for sure, because of the fact that it's a capital project that involves remodeling. But that, again, same thing I said about conservation, same thing I said about health clinic, they all fall under that same umbrella. They're all going to command about the same burden of proof rating.
And she's no different than, I think we do a budget. It's up to the department to make that case for it. And if they can't, then we don't consider it. It's really kind of, that is where it falls. If she's got the case to be made that it is from a pandemic situation and improvements to that, whether it's.
And so, to try to kind of reach what I understand to be the end of the conversation here.
Oh.
I promise. Yeah.
No.
Craig, Craig mentioned support again for the programs over at the jail. I think we're talking mental health type of things now. And then mentioned also some other courthouse issues, like moving the engineer, moving Rory to Pinecrest. I think those are, those are going to be a little more of a stretch in terms of how they, how they fall under the, you know, how they qualify for an expense category. We'll have to, but if, you know, we could have those departments prepare questionnaires, send it on to Baker Tilly, see what they have to say about it.
Don't they have to make the argument, though, that it is kind of pandemic-related?
They absolutely do.
So.
And so if you had the argument that say, well, engineering is, is too crowded, can't, can't work remotely as efficiently from the courthouse, I mean, I'm pulling stuff out of the air right now. We've got engineering people here who could better explain than I can. But they, there, there could be arguments made along that line. But we're talking about a, we're talking about an over one million dollar project that would, at least that was my understanding. And so it would, it would require written justification, it would require comparison to at least two alternatives. I know from conversations with Baker Tilly that there are some concerns about the evidence intake facility, for example. Now, so I'm curious to see what comes back on that. And maybe that type of justification, if indeed it goes to an expense category, could be used for some of these other departments. But what I'm not seeing in those departments, just this is me personally, in my own opinion, I'm not trying to be a supervisor. But what I am seeing, I sometimes have to give disclaimers. But what I am seeing personally on this is, they, unlike elections, and unlike maybe in the treasurer's office, we don't have a crowding issue as much with engineering or maintenance, if that makes sense.
Maybe we try one or two, or one or two, and find out what the, if we can get elections and treasurer's through and what those, what it's like before we look at something else.
Yep. And maybe two.
I'm just saying it would free up space, is what I'm saying. And then spread people out more.
There is some of that, definitely. And remember that at least two supervisors at, back when we had what was, I believe, our last big discussion on the space enhancement study, I believe I heard from two supervisors that they wanted to take a type of a hybrid approach. ARPA isn't going to fund the whole thing. I think everybody knows that. And so the question is, well, at what point does the county want to look further at, at some of these other departments and funding those with some other source? And I'm not trying to say, you know, I'm not trying to push anybody in any direction. I'm just saying, you know, I think that that was already in the backs of everybody's mind, that this wasn't going to be entirely funded by ARPA. And I don't see that happening.
No, early on, I think we thought we had that 10 million there. And that'd sure be nice if we could have done some of those things with the relocation. But then that became far above 10 million dollars. So it was like, okay.
There is still most of that, but there, yeah.
Grant's got his hand up.
Yeah. As a committee member, I, I would like to get a better idea of what the board thinks about that, you know, space assessment study. And, you know, Craig, you've mentioned that it would help to spread employees out in a number of departments. But I think there's pretty widespread feeling that we can't do this 70 or 80 million dollar project in the way it was proposed by the architects. But what do we want to do? And so I guess I'm, I'm having a problem trying to figure out if this is supposed to come from the board or from the individual departments that, that had projects that may or may not affect other departments, or, you know, some are going to have a wider effect than others. How much can you limit it? Can you limit it just to those departments that are, you know, have a pretty intense feeling that their project needs to be done? Or is the board wanting to look at this and say, we think this is a project that, you know, the time has come for us to get started on it. And even though it's going to take more than our funds to do it, we want to pursue it? I just see, it's hard to get that off the ground without seeing if the board is invested in that larger idea, or if you just want to see what comes from the departments.
I think we need to revisit that space needs study. All of us need to look at it again and, and bring it back. Because even if we can't accomplish all that they said, we can't, let's face it, we can't afford all that.
That was a dream, or pipe dream.
It'd be nice if we could come up with a plan that's 30, 40 years out, and at least start it. But maybe there's some movement there we can do with a hybrid approach between bond and ARPA reserves. And at least get it started.
We're starting to fall now.
And if there is a, you know, all or a portion of the health department relocating, that may provide you, now I'm not, again, not suggesting they should, but that may provide you with some space that allows some flexibility, that you don't have to view the dominoes in the same way that you had initially, where there was kind of this musical chairs being played between courthouse rooms.
And turnkey, turnkey space is important. And the space needs study indicated we have a lot of space that's not turnkey. They would need a significant amount of money to modify to suit our needs.
And there may be turnkey space out at Pinecrest. I don't know.
So, yeah. So I'm, I'm taking direction on, on clinic. I'm taking direction on conservation. I'm taking a little bit of direction on mental health, but would like some more.
You want us to provide you some direction, don't you, on like recidivism programs or whatever?
Definitely.
Okay.
And then there's, there's some.
Need someone to champion the mental health programs.
I didn't mean champion. I just meant to provide some information.
Well, I mean, we can look for some programs, whether it's from Nate or.
Somebody's going to have to do the programs, is what I'm.
There's a lot, there's a lot of programs in place right now that, you know, I just read something on, somebody put in paper that they're, that Black Hawk County is hurting mental health-wise. They're, they're really not. There's programs in place. There's just not enough people to take care of them. Is the problem. Bob was going to utilize a building across the street and he wasn't able to get it. And was going to have housing in there for, no, not, no, he didn't get the one. He only got one of them. He didn't get both. He didn't get the one that he really wanted, the one that he was going to have housing in. So I think that's where they got their scooters.
Yeah, his was one of the organizations that came to mind on this.
Yeah.
Tommy Ikas, whether you like his housing idea or not, he's, he's a resource on stuff like.
Well, I agree.
And Bob, Lincoln.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Good places to start, yeah. Yeah, you are. You're the committee meeting.
What's that mean, all right?
Um, I said.
That's his list.
That's my list. That's what I've taken from this.
It's a start.
It's a start.
It's a start, Mike.
Yep.
15 million to go.
So with that being said.
Good conversation.
Entertain a motion for adjournment? Is that okay?